Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Monday, July 24, 2023, and the time is 5:00 P.M. We will start this meeting off as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silence. Madam President, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Would like to remind everyone of the rules of civility and decorum which govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and shall not interrupt the Speaker. Public comment shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, and patience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, any person desiring to address the Commission shall follow written requests with the City clerk prior to consideration of the matter by the Commission or prior to the public comment portion of the meeting. That card shall include the agenda item upon which the person wishes to address, as well as the person's full name, address, and a number of agenda items. And if that is not fully completed, the person will not be recognized. All right, thank you very much. Madam City Administrator, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we have a correction on Item 9.1. The ordinance number is incorrect. It has ordinance number 5036-23. That should be ordinance number 5060-23. So if you will make that correction when we get to that item, the correct ordinance number for 9.1 is 5060-23.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think it's correct on ours. Okay, we do have a presentation, and this is beginning with tonight's meeting. We'll be introducing a segment from time to time that I'm calling "Why West Palm." Why West Palm is designed to recognize notable individuals who make extraordinary contributions and positive differences in our community. Through this platform, we aim to further inspire a culture of community engagement. And by acknowledging these impactful contributions, we encourage all of our residents to get involved, make your own mark on the canvas of West Palm Beach, and help us grow closer to becoming a community of opportunity for all. So for tonight's presentation, I'm delighted to introduce Pranu Skomora, an accomplished educator and leader in the field of early childhood education. Pranu has a wealth of experience in teaching, has been instrumental in establishing successful elementary school programs throughout the country, from New York to Seattle. We are fortunate to have Pranu bring her expertise, passion, and dedication to West Palm Beach, where she founded Row Hees Readery, a place that reflects her commitment to inclusive learning experiences. Row Hees Readery provides opportunities for our youngest learners, our children, and creates a space for building community empowerment and accessibility. Pranu? Approach the mic, please.
Good evening, Mayor Keith James, City Commissioners, and the wonderful city of West Palm Beach Community. My name is Pranu Kumar, and I am a proud Kunkany immigrant daughter, a mother of two beautiful babies, a wife to a fellow dedicated West Palm Beach community member, and the owner, founder, and education leader of Row Hees Readery. Located at the Square, Row Hees Readery is a social justice-driven children's bookstore and learning center dedicated to liberatory learning for all ages, from newborns to adults with the premise of feeling seen, valued, belonging, and a sense of empowerment. We offer 15 to 20 free events a month, from cooking, gardening, dance, music, storytime, creative and healing writing, LGBTQ youth summer camp, and more, both on campus and around South Florida. We have been fortunate to receive a number of educational opportunities, such as social emotional learning curriculum writing, community engagement workshops, and educator coaching. And here is some of our loving community. However, the numbers you see tell the real story about why we love West Palm Beach, and in particular, the Square. As someone who is unapologetic about the pursuit of not just equality, not just equity, but true liberation, I am intentional and transparent about partnerships being authentic and rooted in youth and community voice. The Square has provided a space to do just that. Being geographically located in an area where I'm able to partner with like-minded humans around quality work has been inspiring and humbling. The opportunity to learn and grow with the Square about the needs and wants of our people has allowed me to listen, adapt, and be flexible without hesitation. There are many teams that play an integral role in the execution of events, from environmental to operations, customer relations, marketing, and public relations. And to be able to use a variety of spaces in the area allows accessibility to all learning styles, including those with disabilities, sensory needs, and accommodations. We leverage as many spaces, from the streets lined with vendors to quiet indoor spaces, the lawn for movement, and the shaded areas for storytime and art. And while there is so much happening right now within the world of education, we must be reminded that this has long been happening for many years. The work of Row Hees Readery in our community is something that is a continuation of those who've come before me and have laid a foundation for me. My grandmother, Rohini Rao, from which the store is named after, civil rights activist Septima Clark, and even Dr. Deborah Robinson within our own county, who has led with powerful resistance in the pursuit of educational justice. I remember when there was an informational meeting for the First Steps Grant for minority and women-owned businesses. I was so proud to be in that room and see how engaged every member was with each other. This was no meeting revolved around individualism, but community, that we would continue in pursuit of our passions for those who come after us, and that a city would acknowledge, highlight, and celebrate our community. And that is why, while Readery is a place and space in West Palm Beach, we uphold the values of commitment to community through partnerships. We have developed over 170 partnerships in the community over two years. And not just that, continual partnerships. In the first half of this year alone, we've bought 3,300 people together with a 42% increase in following. All of our partnerships have been with historically marginalized communities. And whether it be book donations, which we've donated nearly 5,000 books, to early childhood facilities, free storytimes, project-based learning programming around Black and Latina culture with the Boys and Girls Club, or caregiver coalitions, we are here to facilitate literacy experiences for all and contribute to the increased literacy and engaged reading rates in our county. We dedicate ourselves to people seeing West Palm Beach as a place to unapologetically be and feel solidarity, while sharing that same sentiment when traveling. We bring a piece of West Palm Beach to you. People are often surprised when they see our little bookstore in West Palm Beach, Florida, or when I'm telling and I'm traveling to work and telling them the premise of our little store, but I'm the first to tell them about how proud I am to live here, not only for me, but for my children and parents who recently moved here as well. All I've ever wanted is to right the wrongs of what my family experienced and facilitate a sense of love and safety in the way that they have tried for me my whole life. When we walk from our house to the bookstore, when they sit on the lawn during the volley and holy events at the Square, when they talk and embrace family here, that kind of empowerment, that kind of environment, that love and acceptance is what makes this all worth it and proud to be here. This city breathes the sense of pride when we see our Dreyfus students perform on Black History Month kickoff panels led by Black student unions. I've lived and taught in the South Bronx, Harlem, Seattle, Austin, Dallas, and Mumbai, but being here and owning a small business, it's been a place where I feel a sense of belonging, a sense of love, where a community has loved on our children like their own and vice versa, where we, for the two years, have developed beautiful relationships with our community, where my now-husband works just two buildings down from me, where I've had a dream fulfilled of being a TEDx speaker, where people have believed in me and where people have believed in each other. Last week, we hosted an adult disability organization, Azul Fashions, for a lunch and learn, and a queer bi-poxed in paints for adults. This week, we are hosting Compass Pride Business Alliance for a social and gathering of LGBTQ-owned and alliance businesses, food provided by Zipatios, another local community centering minority and women-owned businesses. We hope you will join us. And so, coming up, this is another example. On August 12, hosted at the Square, we will celebrate the 50th anniversary of hip-hop along with local-owned businesses such as Digital Vibes and Brian Knowles of Teach Heal Build, honoring culture and power of the Black community. And on August 26, we'll be hosting Women's Equality Day with a number of activities for all ages, for community, for our girls, women, and to support the rights of women. With that, I thank you for the opportunity today to speak about why I love West Palm Beach. The city of West Palm has given me a place to call home, and I am grateful for what our community has done to preserve a place for empowerment and growth. And that's my family, which I'm very grateful for, for which I couldn't do this without.
Pranu, before you go, before you go, let me thank you not only for coming tonight, but thank you for sharing your story. Thank you for all the wonderful work you do at the bookstore and for helping make West Palm Beach a more welcoming, inclusive city. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Now, before we get into the meat of the agenda, I do want to make some remarks and offer some clarification on some recent discussions about our waterfront and the Marina proposal. Now, I understand that there are surveys, petitions, and emails being circulated, and I've had a chance to review the comments and also to meet with some of our community leaders and residents on this issue. I am all in favor of residents having a chance to make their views heard, and I believe that diverse opinions make us stronger and better when we get to hear from all sides and when we stick to the facts. The recent decision by the city to select a Marina project has been facing some harsh criticisms and demands, but there's also some confusion, quite frankly. So let me attempt to set the record straight and offer some solutions. First, the Marine proposal is not about the entire waterway along the intercoastal. It is about a narrow area around current pre-existing docks to help activate the waterway. There's been a lot of emails asking for us to make sure we include citizen input and have a proper planning process with the residents about what they want on the waterfront. I believe I speak on behalf of our entire commission when I say I totally agree with that. Neither I, nor any city commissioner, nor our city staff would ever allow anything to happen to our waterfront without properly planning, community input, and proper review. We all want what is best for our city and for all of our residents. That is why I'm announcing tonight that I am planning to organize a Waterway Community Partnership Program. We're going to work together to create a master plan for the West Palm Beach waterfront. Our Waterway Master Plan will be guided by experts we will hire, will include many community meetings with residents and community leaders and business leaders, and will be open to everyone and discuss what you do and do not want to see along our entire waterfront. That process will be done slowly, carefully, and we will create something about which everyone can be proud. The initial community engagement meeting will take place within the next two weeks. There will be several meetings throughout our city. I believe that is what the residents want to see happen, and is a good way to have our city and community partner together on something with proper input from residents in all parts of West Palm Beach. Now, I also want to clarify how that effort impacts the Marina project. As I mentioned before, the current Marina proposal was something our city worked on for over two years before we made the recent decision to open a discussion for negotiations. The Marina project is a small part of the overall waterway around two current city docks, designed to find ways to activate that area in downtown to benefit our residents, visitors, and businesses. Now, that process is only the beginning. We have a commitment from the Marina developer that they are also engaging residents in the community to review their plans and ensure that there will be resident input. Those ideas will be part of the negotiations. No final decisions have been made, nor is there a timeline by when we have to finalize any plans. I want to make sure our residents are clear that the Marina project is not the entire waterfront across our city. It is a separate proposal, and I believe that that process deserves a chance to get a fair review from all of our residents. Right now, we've seen some emails from the pressure campaign, surveys, and petitions that may or may not have been done properly and likely include opinions of people that don't even live in our city. We need to hear properly from everyone, and our job is to do what is best for the entire city after we've heard from all sides and followed the process properly. I applaud my commissioners and leaders in our community who understand that we have a job to do and to separate the facts from opinions and do what is best for everyone. I believe that between the waterway planning process and the ongoing discussions around the Marina project, we will see a healthy discussion before we make any final decision, and we are in no rush to make any decisions until we feel like we have let the residents have their say. I do want to see our city and community work together, and the Waterway Community Partnership is a way to ensure that all our residents can have a say in the process and help plan for our future. We have not had a robust, comprehensive conversation as a community about our waterfront since, I believe, 2010. Our community, our city, is much different than it was some 13 years ago, and now is the time to engage in that process. So stay tuned to hear more about the Waterway Community Partnership process. Thank you. Now, we will move on with our agenda, beginning with the Consent Calendar, Items 7.1 through 7.4. Any questions, comments on consent? Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief comment. I just wanted to recognize city staff for always zealously pursuing these grants for the city, such as the one included in our consent calendar today. I believe it is significant that they've secured a grant of $1.875 million. So significant that it needs to be recognized. So thank you to city staff for always pursuing those grants.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments, questions on consent, Items 7.1 through 7.4? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept consent calendars presented, Items 7.1 through 7.4.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
They're moved in second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Item 8.1, Resolution Number 182-23, approving the development concept plan for the project located at 8111 South Dixie Highway, submitted by Woodfield Flagler Venture LLC. Ms. Ferriell?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and members of the public. Jennifer Ferriell, Housing and Community Development Director. Commissioners, as you are aware, this commission selected and approved to move forward with an agreement for purchase and sale of property located at 8111 South Dixie Highway with Flagler Realty and Development. And in accordance with the agreement, the developer is required to submit a final concept plan within six months of approval of that agreement. Excuse me. And the purpose of presenting that final concept plan is simply just to make sure that the final concept plan is consistent with what was originally presented by the developer. And that's what we're doing here today. I just want to point out that prior to conducting that presentation, I want to point out that this in no way constitutes a site plan approval. The developer will still have to go through the planning and zoning process, go through the PPRC process, and I do believe that they will have to come back before the commission to get that approval. So again, this is just presenting that final concept plan. As you're aware, this staff and the developer, we've been really committed to continuing to provide community engagement and ensuring that the residents are giving us the proper feedback and that we're keeping them up to date in terms of how the project is progressing. And in those efforts, the developer held a community meeting on July 12 at the West Palm Beach Golf Park, and pretty much, they just gave an overview of where the project is at. They talked about the development program, the residential density, a little bit about the retail uses, and the overall design. There were about 35 stakeholders from the local community. We had some senior board members. We also had some South End residents and business owners. So we had a pretty good turnout, as illustrated here. We also extended invitations to numerous neighborhood groups, not just within the South End community, but for the most part, we got a lot of South End support. And thank you, Commissioner Lambert, for also attending. And then with that said, I'd like to ask the developer and Mr. Kenny to please continue with the presentation and to present that final concept plan.
Mayor, City Commissioners, and City Staff, good evening. My name is Patrick Keenig, Flagler Realty and Development. With me this evening is Ross Abramson of Woodfield Partners, as well as my partner Scott Johnson and my son Brad Keenig. We also have in attendance this afternoon members of our amazing design team, Keith Spina of Spina of Rourke Partners, Bruce Lewis, Ken Tuma, and Tyler Woolsey of Urban Design Studios, and Brian Kelly of Simmons &amp; White. We are honored to be chosen as the city's development partner for this important site. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to update you on the site plan for the project at 8111 South Dixie. We've been diligently working with our design team, potential tenants, and city to further improve our design for this project. This site is important to our South End neighborhoods and to all of the residents of West Palm Beach, as it is one of the gateways into our city. For this site, Flagler and Woodfield are proposing a true mixed-use project that is integrated and walkable with complementary uses located within architecturally appealing buildings. Our proposed commercial buildings are thoughtfully designed to be community-serving and are linked together through public open spaces. Our project will serve as a southern gateway into our city and will feature a "Welcome to West Palm Beach" monument sign and clock tower along Dixie Highway. Our latest design includes two buildings along Dixie Highway totaling 16,897 square feet, which will house a mix of retail shops and restaurant uses. Behind the retail is an eight-story residential structure that includes 358 apartments, including 25% or 90 units set aside as workforce housing. The workforce housing is a critical need in our area, and we are honored to provide this benefit to the city. The workforce units will be a mix of Studio 1, 2, and 3-bedroom units, spread across AMI levels of 60%, 80%, and 100%. During our recent community update meeting we held on July 12, we were asked a question about the view of the residential from Dixie Highway. Our residential building is set back equal to the Wind Dixie Building to our north, 380 feet from Dixie Highway. Along with that large setback, the retail buildings and significant landscape buffer along Dixie provide beautiful views from the road. Please allow me to introduce Keith Spina, our project architect, to discuss this plan in detail.
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening. I'm Keith Spina of Spina of Rourke. Also, one of my partners, Colin Grill, is here with me as well tonight. It's great to be here. I live right down the street. I've lived there for, I don't know, 25 years, and prior to that, I lived another half a mile down the street. And my wife told me, "Don't screw this up. All our friends are going to see it." And it's fun to be here with also, you know, the Flagler guys. We've done a lot of fun projects together, and I mentioned this at the community outreach the other night, that we were, you know, Flagler guys called me one day and said, "Hey, we're going to take that beautiful historic bank, and we're going to turn it into a 7-Eleven." I'm like, "Oh, my God, this is going to be horrible." And it's not. It's spectacular. You know, we think it's, first of all, it preserved an incredible historic building in our community. It created this real positive energy. And the amazing thing was that the golf park the other night, we were sharing this with the residents, a bunch of people agreed with that. So we're really excited. And then, you know, Ross and the Woodfield, my office is in the oversea. Woodfield did that project. It's amazing. I had the benefit of living there for six months while we renovated our house. It was, you know, spectacular apartments for this city. We just opened up 345 Banyan, which is the Anya, another Woodfield project, and then, you know, having the luxury of working on 8111. I think one of the really exciting parts of this is the new thing that Patrick mentioned, which is 90 workforce housing units added to this project. And so I'll keep this relatively quick. The project's pretty consistent. You know, ground floor, Patrick did a really great job. We have retail on the front. It is four-sided architecture. It's what we think of as kind of four-sided pedestrian access. You can walk around the buildings. You could come up here. You could walk your dog. You could have a cup of coffee, and you could sit on any side of the retail buildings and not feel like you're in the back of the building, but in a fabulous front of the building. We, you know, the apartment building beyond, I think Patrick says, 380 feet away from Dixie Highway. So, you know, as he said, some people were asking about the height of it. It is an eight-story building, but that's what it takes to get, you know, the amount of units that we're talking about and the affordable housing. The rooftop has a, you know, great little amenity for the residents, a little lookout terrace. Also, you know, pretty exciting to have, you have the spillway to the south, which is, you know, water view. It's debatable what kind of water view. Once you get a couple floors up over this, though, looking to the east, you have the intercoastal, and then the higher you get, you have the ocean. And then we have the park, right? My wife and I took our first golf lesson ever at the park this last week. I don't know if we're going to survive that, but it's amazing. So these residents have the ability to look out to the west over the park. And then there's some elevations. Architecture's pretty consistent with what was presented previously in all the community meetings, as well as, you know, to all of you. Garage, fully integrated into the building. Again, the apartment building itself has architecture wrapping around the garage. Fabulous courtyard in the middle. We've studied that with Woodfield, who's an expert in apartments, and we think it's going to be a fabulous place to live. And then, you know, the architecture from the street, it is a gateway to the city, right? You're coming in the south end of the city, and there's going to be a fabulous, you know, token of architecture that says "Welcome to the City," but a sign that also says "Welcome to West Palm Beach," which we love. We have the waterfront. We have the retail. Retail, again, four-sided architecture. You know, there was some discussion, what happened to the grocery? We talked about that. We think, I personally love this local retail idea, you know? It's, one big grocer is fabulous, but a bunch of small local retail restaurants, cafes, you know, variety of different opportunities there, we think are really exciting. And then we have the architecture of, yeah, activation along the waterfront. We've been working with our engineers and, I think it's DEP?
South Florida Water Management.
To figure out how we can activate the waterfront. A lot of restrictions, but we will be able to activate it. You will be able to, you know, launch a kayak and, you know, paddleboard over to Lake Clark Shores to meet some of your friends, so we think that should be really fun. And then last, a bunch of community support, and I think that's because it's a great project, but it's also because there was a lot of outreach with the entire team, and so I think we'll leave it at that. So any questions, we're available. So thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, did you have any more to add to your presentation before we go into questions?
I think Keith touched on that. We have lots of community support, two board members from the West Palm Beach Golf Park, Kelly Smallridge, Dennis Grady, Deana Rubio Latin Quarter, Leon Palt, George Elmore, Carl Watson, just to name a few. As you can see, the letters speak for themselves, and we have lots of support. In summary, the activation of the waterfront, the connectivity to the neighboring uses, accessible public spaces, retail restaurant uses, will all create a gathering space for South End residents, provide much-needed workforce housing, increase security, certainly be additive to the South Dixie corridor, strengthen our neighborhoods, and create a beautiful and inviting southern entry into our city. Thank you for allowing us to appear before you again, and our whole team is here to answer any questions.
No, we're not taking questions from the audience.
I have a question, Mayor.
No, we don't take questions from the audience. No, we don't take questions from the audience. I mean, you can speak to them after the presentation. Mr. Keenig, can you talk a little bit about the retail versus the grocery? I know at one point, there was some talk about groceries, so can you kind of tell us how we ended up where we are now?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. A grocer is not ruled out. We are still pursuing urban grocers, and we still have some interest. The grocer we thought, and the city was aware of, that would locate here, came back with a plan that did not fit the ITN expectancy. They wanted the store to be set back off the road with a sea of parking in the front. We came to city staff. That was not something that city staff was receptive to, so we converted to doing local retail.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Commissioner Lambert? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. First, I just wanted to address the resident who spoke up. If you have a comment for the commission or a question, you can submit it to the city clerk. If you have a question for the developer, you can meet with them afterwards. Thank you so much for the presentation, and it's great to see this moving forward. I know that this is something that has long been overdue. I think over ten years now that we have, since we've acquired this property and done a tremendous amount of community outreach and put together the ITN, selected the developers. So thank you all so much for all of the community outreach that you've done, all of those letters of support. You know, as I was listening to this presentation a few weeks ago and again today, I think that, you know, some, there's that phrase, "You're never a prophet in your own town," right? You've all heard that. But I think that this work is a testament to having people who care about our community right here in the community. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who lives and works and plays in this area, because I think it shows your pride in this work. So thank you for that. One of the issues that we see come up time and time again is just about traffic and about density. And, you know, I'm certainly grateful to see the focus on local retail. I think that that's what makes spaces and communities unique, and we want to make sure we have the density to support those businesses. But we also want to make sure that we're not negatively impacting the residents and the businesses that are already here. Can you talk a little bit about the study and the research you've done on that?
I can. Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Lambert. We have completed a traffic study, and the traffic study certainly supports this project. The traffic is actually thirty percent less with the local stores than it is with the I do have Simmons and White here, if anybody has any questions about the traffic study. But there's traffic standards. We certainly meet all of those traffic standards.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I am also very happy to see this moving forward. Exciting to see some of the architecture that is in place, and just excited to hear that you're moving forward also with the waterfront. But my question is, I had, I've received a few emails about the changes in the height, and I believe it is because you've added additional workforce units. But can you talk a little bit about, I guess, how the changes came about? And then my second question is just that we had talked originally about the workforce units being in perpetuity, and I just want to make sure with the addition of new workforce housing units, they will all also be in perpetuity.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Fox. The answer is yes. The workforce housing will be in place for forty years, which is what the PSA agreement ended up saying. I think some questions are about the density. Since the time that we made the presentation, there's been some House bills and new legislation specifically for the city. City Resolution three oh-six dash twenty-two, which allows us to double our density, which was two-ten, take it to four-twenty, and we're proposing three-fifty-eight versus the four-twenty. Jennifer, any comments on that?
Yes, thank you, Patrick. Commissioner, yes, so the interim regulations that were passed under HB thirteen thirty-nine allow the developer to receive additional building capacity. The developer has, is intent to move forward with that process. And as a requirement or the ability to get that additional density, they're gonna have to set aside twenty-five percent of the units as workforce housing, which increases it from fifty-two, which is what the agreement currently states, to ninety units of affordable and workforce housing. And they're gonna be spread amongst the sixty percent AMI, the hundred percent AMI, and the eighty percent AMI. They will be, have a period of affordability of a minimum of forty years, or for the residential, or for the life of the residential portion of the project.
President Warren?
Thank you. I have comments more than questions, and I wanted to say that I really do appreciate the sincere effort to have a very high bar for your minority and women-owned businesses that are participating, that will be participating in this project. I appreciate that effort. I'm looking forward to seeing minority and women-owned businesses engaged and the outreach efforts that you're going to do in order to have that executed fully. And perpetuity was a word that I was hoping for, a word that I was very happy to hear. I am, I am happy that we're looking, because we don't see where the workforce and affordable housing is going to change in the immediate future. I don't see it happening as quickly as we would like it to. So to intentionally move forward with a plan for workforce and affordable housing for perpetuity is something that I would love to see more of. That's a word that I drop often. I haven't received all of the responses back for that, that I've wanted to see, but I'm very happy that you have raised the bar here, and I believe that we're gonna see more projects and more people, that as they come forward, they'll use the same language and have a similar intention.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren.
Commissioner Lambert, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you, yes, just a follow-up. So I appreciate the focus on the workforce housing. You know, I think it was about four years ago that the mayor set the goal of three hundred workforce housing units in three years, and we quickly blew that out of the water. But if you think about this, these ninety units would be one-third of that goal, and I think that that is substantial. My follow-up question is just, is the traffic study that was done updated to reflect the increase in density in the housing? I know that you mentioned the retail.
Yes, it has been updated to reflect that, including the retail, which, the result of that was, again, a thirty percent reduction in traffic with this retail versus the grocer.
Excellent, thank you.
Very good. Any other comments or questions from the dais? Okay, we do have a number of cards. I'll read out three at a time. If you could start making your way toward the dais. Dennis Grady, Tom Frankel, and Jim Jenkins.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Dennis Grady, four oh-one North Flagler, here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches. This project originated when I met with Patrick and his fellow developers while I was still CEO and President of the Chamber of Commerce of the Palm Beaches. I'm here tonight to just add a, "We're still with them, we support them." I think staff gave you the excellent, brief, and concise presentation that this is one of the steps in this process. And I hope, and the chamber hopes, that you'll unanimously pass staff recommendations and make a excellent, outstanding, and much-needed and welcome improvement to the southern gateway to West Palm Beach. Thank you.
Tom Frankel?
I'm here tonight on behalf of the West Palm Golf Park. I am one of the board members, been involved in the golf park project for three years from inception, and have had the opportunity to know the Johnsons and the Kennings for quite a long time, as well as Keith Spina and Simmons and White and so forth. You couldn't have a better professional team involved in this project. We were asked our opinion way back when. We thought they were the most qualified to do this project. We're in support of the project, obviously, and especially the workforce housing component, as we will have at our peak next winter, over a hundred employees at the golf park, many of which are having trouble finding housing. And being so close and nearby, it's gonna be a great asset, and can't wait for it to happen quickly, so we can have places for self of our employees to reside. Thank you.
Jim Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I live in the south end of West Palm, about the-
Just state your name for the record, please.
Jim Jenkins, resident of the south end of West Palm, about a half a mile from the project. First, thank you for paving Flagler Drive. The, West Palm has needed a anchor at its south end, and I think this is the right project for it. I think it does a few things. It does give us the local retail. We have AOLI right now, which is terrific, but we need some more. And so bringing some more business activity to the south end, I think, will be very helpful. Candidly, when you all were looking at the golf park property, I was excited about there being workforce housing. There is a significant need for it. I could put on my former board chair and current trustee of Palm Beach Atlantic, we have a great need for workforce housing. I think having the over-allocation of workforce housing in this one kind of makes up for that, and I'm really excited about the project. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll read three more names, you start making your way toward the dais. I'm towards the podium. Zach Pults, Gail Levine, and Jose Satillo.
My name is Zach Pults. I'm one of the owners of the Flanagan's in West Palm Beach, which is actually, that location is family-owned, my parents, brother and I. I speak today as an advocate for the vision that was offered. Flanagan Realty developed the business across from us on the corner of Southern and Olive. What had been a vacant area is now an active, well-lit business. We would much prefer having safe, well-run establishments in our immediate area than vacancies. As we look ahead, we cannot ignore the pressing need for modern living spaces. Our population is growing, and so are aspirations. By embracing this development, we can alleviate housing shortages, offering families a safe haven to call home and nurture their dreams. Moreover, this venture is more than just bricks and mortars. It's about building community. The area will foster a sense of belonging, turning strangers into friends, and forging a strong sense of unity among residents. But it doesn't stop there. This development will fuel economic growth and safety in the area. As commercial spaces spring to life, entrepreneurs and businesses will find a fertile ground to flourish. Job opportunities will abound, invigorating the local economy, and bringing prosperity to the area. I have no doubt that future tenants will find their way to Flanagan's and other businesses throughout West Palm Beach. Great cities are not of overnight, but with bold visions and initiatives, I urge you to embrace this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Levine?
Good evening. Gail Levine, South End. I'm very pleased with what has been presented, and I really do feel that it will be a great gateway into our town. We've been waiting a very long time. I've lived in West Palm for twenty-seven years now, and we've gone through very rocky, difficult times to sort of get rolling on Dixie Highway, and finally, South of Southern is finally coming into its own. But it is due to the police, code enforcement, landscape, and now we're going to have a beautiful entryway into our downtown. Also, as I had mentioned to Mr. Patrick, I was very glad to see that the setback was really so far. I was very concerned about that. And also, they're very sensitive to the fact that, up until now, we've had a major problem along that waterway. You all know and familiar with the fact that drug-dealing, prostitution, homelessness has taken hold underneath that bridge. So the developers do have something to deal with. I do know that at this time, they are not planning on private security. They're hoping that perhaps with the development and with the amount of people coming into the neighborhood, that problem will dissipate, but we cannot forget about that. Also, is it possible, some of the neighbors in the south end right near that development has asked, is there a possibility that we start having conversations with FDOT? With perhaps them, for years, there's been talk of doing some redesign along Dixie Highway to make it way more comfortable for neighbors to cross over Dixie, and it's always been a major problem. And if something could be worked with FDOT at this time for perhaps one or two sophisticated, uplifted walk paths from east to west, west to east. So I know that isn't something that's really on the list of priorities, but to make it safer at the south end, because the amount of activity and walking and children on bicycles and vehicles, all of that may have to be addressed. So perhaps FDOT could be sort of taken into consideration, and thank you very much. I know we'll all be very happy with that development, and I am very comfortable and assured with the people that are involved in bringing this to our city, and especially the fact they live in our neighborhood, so we know where to knock on the door.
Thank you very much, thank you. Jose Satillo?
Mr. Mayor, distinguished commissioners, distinguished staff, distinguished all. My name is Jose Satillo, twenty-one Harbor Drive, Lake Worth Beach. I am here because for many, many years, I've been waiting for this piece of land to actually come to life. I believe that what I seen today, what I seen before, is exactly what we need. It's going to fix many things. Palm Coast Plaza is going a little bit downhill. The businesses that are located in that plaza are in need of additional folks to go and visit and buy and, and just have a good time around there. And I think this development is gonna bring the right amount of people, the density, to help the businesses that, right now, are struggling a little bit in that area. So if there is, I definitely want this to happen. Maybe, I'm in Lake Worth, but I see, I lived in Palm Beach County for almost fifty years, and that area there has needed help for a long time. So I love to see that many commissioners are in support, and for whatever it's worth, you have mine as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm gonna read off the last four cards, start making your way toward the podium. Joni Brinkman, Shannon Wessel, Jeffrey Jervis, and Saber Kirkpatrick. Ms. Brinkman?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Joni Brinkman with Urban Design Studio. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of Palm Coast Invest LLC, my client who owns Palm Coast Plaza, in support of the petition. This type of mixed-use project with a mix of uses, with a synergy created by the park and the whole area down here, our clients are excited about these residents coming forward, and as the prior speaker mentioned, I think it only portrays good things coming forth for Palm Coast Plaza as well. So we are in support of the project.
Thank you. Shannon Wessel?
Good evening. My name is Shannon Kessel. I live at six eight one five Garden Avenue, so this is right in my backyard. I have lived and worked in West Palm Beach for the last decade. I'm an alumni of Palm Beach Atlantic University, and have watched this area make significant improvements for businesses and residents through the use of great projects like this. My husband and I purchased our home right here in an up-and-coming area that we knew wasn't great yet, but was going to be, that fit our budget, and our hopes have been that we would have great projects in this neighborhood. And I can tell you that the park is the most fantastic thing that's happened ever. We go there almost every day right now, and that is pretty much the starter for the redevelopment of this entire area. We've had dreams for a long time of walking, biking, to nearby restaurants, coffee shops, and retail stores, and only leaving the neighborhood, not because we want to, but because we have to. Right now, we can't really go many places. There really isn't anywhere to go besides AOLI. And so I went to the Flagler Development Neighborhood Meeting a few weeks ago, which was very well-attended, what they said is true, and was pleasantly surprised by what I heard and saw. I'm especially excited about the plans to activate the canal waterfront, bring great restaurants, make that whole area better. We're looking forward to the ability to walk down Georgia- We're looking forward to the ability to walk down Georgia Avenue to this area from our house and really just stay in the neighborhood. That's what we want to do. There also currently are no apartment complexes that come to mind in the south-end area whatsoever. I have a lot of friends trying to move back here and contribute back into the West Palm Beach community. I had to move away because they couldn't afford to live here anymore. Now they have better jobs. They can afford to live here, but they can't find anywhere to live other than Port St. Lucie, Boynton, things like that. So this is a really important project, in my opinion, for multifaceted, multi-facet reasons. This is also a huge eyesore in our neighborhood. Don't love driving by this, magnet for vagrants, legal dumping, et cetera. So please approve this. Please bring more things like this to our neighborhood, and thank you for all that you've already done to make this area better.
Thank you. Jeffrey Jervis.
It's a tough act to follow. Jeff Jervis, I live at 224 Bloomfield Drive. I also run a business, Mint Eco Car Wash, in the local neighborhood. I'm here because I find that supporting voices are often underrepresented at hearings, although this may be the exception. I want the commission to know that every time I discuss this project with colleagues, friends, neighbors, family, it is without exception that they are ecstatic that something is happening on such an important location. Personally, I believe that the retail, the affordable housing, and the public waterfront and gathering spaces are exactly what is needed here. I will also offer a personal observation. One of our locations is across the street from this group's 7-Eleven project, and the introduction of a vibrant business to that corner has changed the crime, has changed the homelessness and the loitering on that intersection. And I believe that that should be the same expectation here. I know we have issues in that end of the, of the city with respect to some of the biker groups that have been going around there wreaking havoc, and I believe this is the type of thing that will end that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sabra Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Sabra Kirkpatrick, and I live south of Southern Boulevard at 103 Elwa Place. I'm also on the Board of SENA, the South End Neighborhood Association, yet I am here personally and not on behalf of SENA. I am 100% in favor of this project. Flagler Realty and Development, and this new version that they're putting out there. I think they should build 358 high-end apartments, as well as 17,000 square feet of retail space. We need that section of West Palm Beach to evolve and to catch up with the rest of the city. The south of Dixie Highway corridor, so the south end Dixie Highway corridor, needs beautification, and it certainly needs redevelopment. It is time. As you are well aware, neighbors can and will complain just about anything. And everyone will weigh in and tell you what they would prefer or what they wish would be there. But the reality is, is that 8111 is not only an eyesore, but has been a serious problem in the south end for far too long. It has been harboring homeless, prostitution, drug use, and a vast array of other sad stories. Sure, we would prefer another grocery store or sparkling IMAX movie theater, or even an array of glamorous restaurants. But will those businesses be sustainable? Will those lovely extras make enough money to entice another developer to buy the dirt and build for the same price? I'm doubtful, and I'm in real estate, so I have a pretty good background on that. What makes financial sense right now, in this odd financial market we are currently in, is a new large apartment development, and I think we should all get behind this change. Lord knows, we need it. I believe Flagler Development's new building will be a huge benefit to our city and the south end in particular. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do have another card. Terry Haynes. You want to come to the mic, please? Wait till you get to the mic, so we can, okay, please, start.
This is my first rodeo.
It's okay. Take your time.
My name's Terry Haynes. I'm a resident of West Palm Beach, and I'm very impressed on the development. I think it's a wonderful idea. I hear accolades from all the previous people, so I won't, I won't repeat it. My only question is, um, I noticed there was no swimming pool. Is that an intentional thing? Is there a reason why all these 300-plus apartments wouldn't include a swimming pool? It was not mentioned. There is? Well, then I stand happily corrected. Thank you so much.
Okay, that is all the cards. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Staff, you want to make a presentation?
Yes, Mayor, if I may, and I just one minor thing I'd like to point out. The developer, although they are receiving the additional building capacity, they are setting aside, obviously, a total of 90 workforce housing units, and they're not asking for any additional incentives from the city. They're not asking for grand dollars. They're not asking for development fee waivers. They are doing this just utilizing that density. So I just wanted us to think that for future projects, as we know, that we'll have other developers who are also going to be taking advantage of it. So just wanted to make that point, and I want to thank the developer for their commitment to affordable and workforce housing.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Presuming that this moves forward tonight, can you describe the next steps in this project?
Well, the developer is working now on the entitlement and the planning and zoning approvals, so they're working through all their governmental approvals. They'll have to go through the PPRC process, and they will have to come back before the commission again to get their site plan approvals. So they're working through that. We're on schedule in accordance with what's in the agreement, so we, we seem to be moving on track.
Thank you so much. I think that this is an exciting economic development project for our city, and I'd be excited to make the motion when the time is ready, Mayor.
Well, I think the time is now, because I don't hear any, see any other hands, so.
Thank you.
Feel free.
I, um, move approval of resolution number 182-23.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations. Look forward to hearing more. We'll give them a few minutes to exit. Okay. All right, item 9.1. Public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 5060-23, amending chapter 22, article 12 of the city's Code of Ordinances, providing for repeal of an ordinance that is now preempted to the state per state law.
Thank you, Mayor. Arlene Francinaro, City's Legal Department. Mayor, Commissioners, we're here tonight for your consideration on first reading to enter an ordinance which actually repeals some code sections that were put into place last year. The two sections that we're discussing to repeal exist in chapter 22. Article.
Arlene, hold on just a second. Let's, let them exit. Okay, proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Related to rental dwelling units, those are sections 22, 448, and 22, 449. If y'all remember, during the pandemic, there was certainly a large ground swell of very large increases in rental amounts in certain residential tendencies. And so our city, as well as other jurisdictions, had passed some code sections that tried to address that with respect to notice when there were certain increases or when a certain tendencies were going to terminate. However, we've had a very busy state legislature session this year, and one of those that they passed this year is committee substitute, House Bill 1417. And the state has taken upon itself to preempt this very, this, this particular category in a very comprehensive manner, actually. And it was actually signed by the governor the end of June, and it was effective July 1st. And so it has a very long list of what the state wants to preempt to itself, including what you can see there is items regarding the rental agreement, rights and responsibilities of landlord/tenant, fees charged by the landlord, or notice requirements, and that's specifically what our two sections dealt with. And so one of the good things, though, is that in certain residential tendencies, the state did increase the notice time period from 15 days to 30 days, so that is some relief for renters. But because the state has decided to preempt, we do need to repeal those two sections. And to do that, I would ask you tonight to approve first reading, and second reading would be scheduled for August 7th, 2023.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for all the work that you did at the beginning to help our residents when they needed it most. It's unfortunate that we, this is being taken away from us, that we don't really have a choice other than to, to move forward, I, I guess, tonight. But I do want to thank you for helping us put this in place at the time. I think it was very helpful for many residents, and that's it. Thank you.
Actually, that was our attorney, Nina Busby, who put that together, so kudos to her.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 5036-23 on first reading and to schedule second reading for August 7th.
I think that we need to change the number.
It's 506023.
506023.
Okay, I recommend approval of ordinance number 5060-23 on first reading and to schedule second reading for August 7th, 2023.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Discussion. Hearing none. Madam Kirk can read the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 5060-23, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, repealing sections 22-448 and 22-449 of article 12 of chapter 22. Business regulations stashed rental dwelling units, which require written notice by landlords for termination of certain tendencies, and which required written notice by landlords of rental payment increases in certain tendencies. Declaring any specific provision of any city, of West Palm Beach ordinance, resolution, rule, or policy in conflict with this ordinance, null, void, and repeal to the extent of such conflict, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, providing a codification clause, providing an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9.2, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 50, 5048-23 regarding a text amendment to the city's Code of Ordinances, chapter 94, zoning and land development regulations, section 94-203, to add cultural facilities as an eligible use to apply for a parking waiver within a community service plan development district.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Linda Louis, Senior Planner for the Record. If we may, Mayor, the applicant and staff would like to present items 9.2 and 10.2 together, since both items are related. However, both items will need to be read into the record separately and voted upon separately as well. It'll just make things easier for us.
Okay, well, then let me, uh... All right, I'll tell you what. Why don't we get to 10.2, since we've already read 9.2 into the record? Because that's quadra-dishual. We got to swear in everybody and stuff, so.
And make disclosures, Mayor, for the.
Exactly, exactly. So now is the time, Commissioners, as we're entering the public hearing portion, quadra-dishual portion of the meeting, to make your disclosures. So we'll start with Commissioner Ward.
As to matter 10.2, are we doing all, just 10.2, or all of them right now? 10.2?
No, no, we could, we could do all, all of them in there.
Okay. As to items 10.1 through 10.4, I have not had any ex parte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. As to items 10.1, 10.3, and 10.4, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. As to item 10.2, I have had ex parte communications with the applicant and their representatives. I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
President Warren.
As matters 10.1, 10.3, and 10.4, I have not had ex parte communications, not received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. As to matter 10.2, I have had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, excuse me, I have had ex parte communications with the applicant and the applicant's attorney. I have not written, received written communications, not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Fox.
As to this matter, items 10.1 to 10.4, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Commissioner Peruzzi.
Thank you. As to items 10.1, 10.3, 10.4, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. As to item 10.2, I have had ex parte communications with the applicant. I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications may be made a part of the record.
Thank you. Madam Kirk, can you swear in all witnesses, please?
Would everyone wishing to speak on items 10.1 through 10.4, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, now we will go to 10.2, and we'll come back to 10.1. Item 10.2, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 5049-23, a rezoning to change the zoning designation of approximately plus or minus 10.5 acres within Drea Park, generally located east of Interstate 95 and approximately 970 feet north of Summit Boulevard from Recreation and Open Space, ROS, to Community Service, CS. Public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 5050-23, a further rezoning chaining, approx, changing approximately plus or minus 10.5 acres within Drea Park, generally located east of Interstate 95 and approximately 970 feet north of Summit Boulevard from Community Service, CS, to Community Service Plan Development, CSPD, and a discussion of resolution number 172-23, approving the development regulations and conditions for the Cox Science Center and Aquarium Community Service Plan Development, CSPD, and granting waivers of the zoning and land development regulations. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your time tonight. My name is Matt Wojahowski. I'm here on, from Schmidt Nichols on behalf of the applicant, the Cox Science Center. So as was summarized, we're discussing four items today. Item 9.2, and then the three items under 10.2 on your agenda. So I have with me here some members from our team, as well as from the Cox Science Center, if there's any questions for that portion of the discussion. So I, they're up here. All of the team members are listed up here. I'm going to walk you through a little bit of the site background, what we're requesting, and how that relates to the agenda items you've just heard before you. Talk a little bit about the phasing of the project, and then go through the waivers as part of that CSPD discussion. So as was mentioned, the project is located south of Southern Boulevard, north of Summit, along Drea Trail, as you can see outlined there. There's also the existing Styles Nicholson Center, or STEM Center, as it's referred to in our reports. So that's going to be the subject of today's discussion. So a little bit about the history of the Science Center. It has existed in this location since the 1960s when it opened. It's gone through renovations in the 70s, the 90s, as well as another addition in 2010. You can see this by looking at the building. There's a lot of different aspects to it. So the idea behind this is to preserve that existing building and add an addition for some new, new space. So as I mentioned, there are four requests as part of today's discussion. Under 9.2, we do have the zoning text amendment for Community Services Plan Development section to add cultural facilities to the list of eligible uses for parking waivers. Item 10.2 on your agenda also has three items, a rezoning from Recreation Open Space to Community Service, a rezoning from Community Service to Community Service Plan Development, and then the discussion on the Community Service Plan Development, which involves the site plan for this project. and then the discussion on the Community Service Plan Development, which involves the site plan for this project. The site plan, we'll get to those details shortly. So the first item, the zoning text amendment adding cultural facilities to the list of eligible uses, revolves around Section 94-203C. As you can see on your screen there, this, other uses include colleges and universities, public and private, and other school uses. So we, we are proposing to add cultural facilities so that the Science Center is eligible for this parking waiver as well. And that does meet the zoning text amendment standards that are listed in the ordinance under 9432A. Request number two is ordinance number 50, or 5049-23, is a rezoning from Recreation Open Space to Community Service. You can see here on the screen on the right side, that area in the red on the map is the general location of the Science Center lease area. The future land use is Community Service, so this rezoning is consistent with the future land use of the, of the city. And that does meet, again, all of the rezoning standards of 9432A. Our next request, request number three, is ordinance 5050-23. This is a rezoning from Community Service to Community Service Plan Development. Again, I have the same map up there indicating that the future land use does support this request. The reason for this is that the Community Service Plan Development, in order to establish that, you must have an underlying Community Service zoning. So the site currently has a Recreation Open Space, so it's a two-step rezoning, all as part of this application. Again, meets the standards of 9432A. As part of the discussion, the exciting part that, of the actual site plan, this will be under Resolution 172-23. Today, it's just a discussion item, but I'd like to walk you through the site plan so that you all understand how this, our rezonings and our waiver and our text change all relate to this project. So first, as part of this, this application, the Science Center and the Parks Department and the city are working to extend the lease and renegotiate the lease area so the lease would be extended by 75 years with an additional 25-year extension option on top of that for a total of a potential 100-year lease. That includes 10.5 total acres. I'll go over the addition on the next slide. It's a little easier to keep that separate. The idea is to combine, right now there's two separate areas and we'd like to combine that into one. Other improvements include the new Drea Trail road alignment, which needs to be shifted slightly to the north in generally the same location. That will allow for some of the parking reconfiguration in this area and expansion. There will be 76 spaces added to the north of the lease area along Drea Trail. There will also be 208 parking spaces on-site within the lease area. There'll be additional sidewalks and pathways that'll be added and widened to connect to the existing park system and actually help with the overall circulation. The lake will be modified to help with drainage, as well as water and sewer utility improvements will be happening on-site. We did a tree survey. There are going to be over 550 trees, 550 trees per survey. 305 of those will be either removed or relocated. So as you can see there, 69 will remain, 131 relocated. There's a couple of trees there that we worked with the Parks Department and the Science Center to relocate to become some focal points. As I'm going to discuss in a few slides, this is a phased approach. There'll be two phases to this project, but it will allow the Science Center to remain open for a majority of the project. And the project is utilizing sustainable lead building methods. So as I mentioned in my previous slide, the lease will be extended with that 100-year potential option, 75 years and 25 extension. This is the current lease area. It involves this two-acre portion here, as well as this four-acre portion here. The lease agreement will add this area to, for a total of 10.5 acres as part of the lease area, and that'll make that one contiguous site. And then, as I mentioned there, the road will be realigned a little bit to help with that parking and circulation. And this lease does include the ongoing maintenance of this area and as well as the parking area to the north. So a little bit about what's going on inside the building, inside the, the expansion. There's currently a 30,000-square-foot building on 6.8 acres. This proposed expansion is over 70,000 square feet, bringing the total to just over 100,000 square feet on 10 and 1/2 acres. There'll be redesigned front entry and connecting plaza to connect that Stiles Nicholson Center to the Science Center and make it feel like a little bit more of a campus, a little bit more cohesive, with some new, a new lobby, gallery, visitor center, a much larger expanded aquarium, planetarium. I won't read through all these, but I think you get the, I understand here, there's, there's a lot of improvements here that we're all really excited about, so. That's getting into the phasing a little bit. So Phase 1, which would take approximately 18 to 24 months, we're hoping to start that if we get approval next month to kick that off right away in August of 2023 here. That would involve this area shown in green right here. So that would be Phase 1. That would include the demolition and reconfiguration of some of the parking. That would be our utility installation and rearrangement, parking, circulation, and drop-off. There'd be some temporary areas added during Phase 1, as I mentioned, to help keep the Science Center open during this construction. This will also see ADA upgrades to the park, as well as security upgrades in the form of site lighting. And Phase 2 is, once, will commence, once Phase 1 is completed, that'll see the final demolition of any items that are still remaining on-site that need to be removed. Final utility installation. The new building and the use expansion will actually take place during this phase. As you can see, there's a few additional buildings on your graphic to the right there. We'll see the final parking, circulation, and drop-off installed, and that's when all the landscaping will be, will be finalized, and then the maintenance will commence upon, during Phase 2 as well. So a little bit about the phasing is, so first, the, the parking lot directly to the east of the center will be demoed. And then the Stiles Nicholson Center parking will be demoed, along with the realignment of Drea Trail. That's sort of the first element of that. Next up, the parking to the north of the lease area will be added. The lake expansion, so a lot of the groundwork takes place here. That'll allow for all the drainage for the project to happen. And then, as well as the expanded parking to the south lot, which will be primarily used for staff, staff parking. And then for the second phase, this is the 66,698-square-foot expansion that will house many of the, the aquarium and that visitor gallery and all of those improvements that we saw on the previous slide. This is where the, the entryway and the fountain, all the fun stuff will happen. There'll also be a new 6,400-square-foot maintenance building constructed just to the south of that, just west of the existing Science Center building. That'll allow for all the, the maintenance to be contained on-site, as well as all their equipment. Some of the, the new features here, there will be some new bus parking. Right now, there's currently not any bus parking, so this was designed to have a little better drop-off and circulation for the buses, as well as somewhere designated for them to park. As we know, there will be some, some schools and things interested in attending here. And then we have, this arrow kind of shows you where the new entrance is. As I mentioned, you can see that helix design, maybe it's a little hard to see, but that will be a sidewalk design that really creates that cohesiveness with the Stiles Nicholson Center and the entrance of this building. There'll be a new butterfly garden installed just to the north of the, the parking and drop-off. And then there'll be a new connector road that connects that south parking lot to the east one that'll allow for a lot of those activities that happen in the amphitheater to be easily loaded and unloaded along a designated, in a designated area. So here is a rendering of what the site looks like. This is looking sort of southwest at the project into the main entrance, as if you were just above the Stiles Nicholson Center. So it kind of gives you the idea of how the, has a very welcoming entryway, and you can see the bus drop off to the right there as well. So that's a little rendering of it. And then, just as part of our discussion here, as was mentioned earlier, there are, we're asking for four waivers as part of this application. This is the discussion portion of your agenda, so I will familiarize all of you with these right now. Number one is our parking waiver. So this relates to that text amendment by adding cultural facilities to, to that parking waiver section. It allows us to ask for a 30% reduction in parking. We're not asking for a reduction in parking. We're asking to locate 27% of our parking outside of the lease area, directly north. So in this area right here, as you can see on the bottom of that graphic, there's a little, a dark line there that indicates the end of the lease area. So all of these 76 parking spaces would be built and maintained by the Science Center, although they would not be located within the lease area. So that's where that parking waiver applies for this project. Waiver number two is for the building separation. The code requires 15 feet of separation between two buildings within a Community Service Plan Development. We are proposing eight feet of separation for a seven-foot waiver, and that's between these two buildings here, kind of in this area. And then there's a few between the, as you go east-west between the new building and the existing one, there's a few areas that are less than 15 feet. The idea here was that it was meant to all look and feel, feel like one building addition, although due to, there were some grading challenges and some design challenges that required these to be separate. So we are asking for a waiver of, of that 15-foot building separation. That's the second area. The third area is that the code requires the buffering of non-residential uses adjacent to public thoroughfares and non-residential zoning districts. So to the north, east, and south of the site are all, is all a non-residential zoning district, which is that Recreation Open Space that the park is currently zoned. And to the west, we do a, but a public thoroughfare in I-95. That's, technically, that is the site's front yard, although it's not, not much of a front door there. That is technically our front yard and would require a five-foot buffer. We're asking for, for that to be waived on all sides, as we want this to feel like it's a, it's a part of the park, it's a part of a campus, cohesive design, and not necessarily be walled off from anybody who's walking through the park. So we're requesting waivers from buffers on all sides of this project. And our fourth waiver is for non-residential fences within a front yard. As I mentioned previously, I-95 to our west is our front yard. There is an existing 48-inch gate located just to the west of the building, north of that roundabout you see there. We are proposing to replace that, so we wanted to make sure that we had a waiver and that would be acceptable. So that is our fourth waiver. We did receive the staff report for the project. There were seven conditions. I will go through those quickly. As was mentioned earlier, there will be a maintenance agreement that's included in the lease agreement, but there will be a separate maintenance agreement, which has been agreed to. Was, condition number two is to submit a tree alteration permit based on our landscape plan. We have submitted that, so that's in the works. We wanted to get this project rolling next month, so we are, we did submit that on May 25. Condition number three was related to a few of the trees that the Parks Department wanted to see relocated into a different area north of the, north of the site, in a different area of the park. We did work with the department to relocate three of those trees, which are listed there. And then Items 4 through 7 had to deal with tree disposition, landscaping, and some of the other standard language, in which we've agreed to all of those. So the conditions are being agreed to and are being met. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. If not, I guess I'd have my team here and staff who would like, would give their presentation.
Any questions for the applicant before we hear from staff? Okay, very good. Staff?
So good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Linda Louis, Senior Planner for the Record. So just to quickly summarize, the items being presented are related to the Cox Science Center expansion project. The first ordinance, which is item number 9.2 on the agenda, it's for ordinance number 5048-23, which is for the approval of the text amendment to the City's Zoning and Land Development Regulations to add cultural facilities as a use eligible to apply for parking waivers within a Community Service Plan Development District. The amendment just adds cultural facilities to the use of eligible uses, so you can see the text highlighted in yellow is the addition. It does not change the criteria or process for parking waivers. The amendment will allow the Science Center Expansion Project the relief from the parking requirements of our zoning code. The second part, which will be, which is 10.2 on the agenda, is the rezoning of the Science Center lease area and the establishment of the Cox Science Center Community Service Plan Development. The rezoning is a two-part process, which requires the initial rezoning from Recreation and Open Space to Community Service with a further rezoning to Community Service Plan Development. The establishment of the Cox Science Center Community Service Plan Development, which is a discussion item tonight, provides for the site plan, the requested waivers, the development regulations for the expansion project, and that will be adopted by second reading with the ordinances. So as noted by the applicant, the project does seek for waivers, which staff does not have any issues and does support. So based on staff's analysis and findings, staff is recommending the approval of all the ordinances associated with the Science Center Expansion Project, as staff has found that the rezonings, as well as the text amendment, complies with the amendment's standards of our city's zoning and land development regulations. As noted at the very beginning, Resolution Number 172-23 is a discussion item, and that is for the Community Service Plan Development. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? President Warren? And then Commissioner Lambert?
Have we identified any other facilities that will qualify as cultural facilities in this Community Service Plan Development zone?
I'm sorry?
Have we identified other facilities that may be able to qualify as a cultural facility in the C S P D?
Quite possibly the Boys and Girls Club that may come in. But yes, cultural facilities, that is, is a facility that would benefit the public.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much, and this is just an exciting project to, to come to our city and to see the expansion, so thank you. I love seeing the private community come together with the, the city to see projects like this. I had a couple of questions. The first on 10.2 about the 15-foot separation waiver. What was the reasoning for setting that parameter to begin with? I just want to make sure that we're not foregoing any safety measures by allowing the waiver.
The distance separation from, I'm sorry. Oh, so it's the building separation, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it was the fourth waiver.
So, you know, it's, it's just to provide some distance between, but for this particular project, it just made sense to, for the buildings to be placed closer together for cohesiveness. The distance separation is typically applied to, just to provide reasonable distance. It's just a generalized distance figure that we have in our code. But in terms of this one, it just made more sense to have the buildings closer together to provide for a cohesive project.
Okay, and I'm sure that this has been looked into, but just what comes to mind is making sure that our public safety officers could get in there if needed, but it.
Correct. I mean, this project did go through the Plans and Plats Review Committee, and the building official, as well as fire, does sit on the P P R C, and they didn't have any concerns regarding the proposed building separation.
Okay, great, thank you. And the mayor had a question about 9.2 as well.
Yes.
Thank you. By adding cultural facilities to the text amendment, do we have other cultural facilities that might be able to benefit from this text amendment? You know, I don't know if they've come forward, or if we've thought about that, if we anticipate that?
I mean, as of right now, this would be the only one. I mean, obviously, the Boys and Girls Club are coming in with a proposed application. At that point in time, we wouldn't assess, but.
But this would be citywide, right? Not just in this area?
Well, it, it only applies to Community Service Plan Development, so if they were to come in with a plan development. So if they were to come in with a plan development under the community service plan development, yes, they would qualify.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we will take these in order. If there are no other questions, why don't we start with 9.2?
Mayor, move we approve ordinance number 5048-23 for text amendment to the city's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Section 94-203 to add cultural facilities as a use eligible to apply for a parking waiver within the city, within a community service plan development zoning district. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with Section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
They're moving the second. Discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5048-23, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, at Chapter 94, that, at Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article 7, Special Districts, Section 94-203, Community Service Plan Development District to add cultural facilities as a use eligible to apply for a parking waiver within a community service plan development district, declaring this amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflicts clause and a codification clause and severability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we will turn now to 10.2. There's no discussion, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 5049-23, changing the zoning designation of plus or minus 10.5 acres located within Dreher Park, generally located east of Interstate 95 and approximately 970 feet from Summit Boulevard, from the, from recreation and open space to community service. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, the factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and standards in Section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
They're moving the second. Discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5049-23, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach by rezoning approximately 10.5 acres within Dreher Park, generally located east of Interstate 95 and approximately 970 feet north of Summit Boulevard, from recreation and open space to community service, declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflicts clause, providing an effective date and for other recreation and open space to community service, declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflicts clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, would you, your, your description combine two of those ordinances If you'd like, Mayor, I can read off of my, the ordinance for you.
Why don't we get somebody to read the ordinance?
Yeah.
Read correctly.
Ordinance, ordinance number 5049-23, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach by rezoning approximately 10.5 acres within Dreher Park, generally located east of Interstate 95 and approximately 970 feet north of Southern Boulevard, from recreation and open space to community service, declaring the zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflicts clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I move to approve ordinance number 5050-23, changing the zoning designation of a 10.5 acres located within Dreher Park, generally located east of Interstate 95 and approximately 970 feet north of Summit Boulevard, from community service to community service plan development. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in Sections 94-32 and 94-35(c) of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
They're moving the second at discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5050-23, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the zoning map of the City of West Palm Beach by rezoning approximately 10.5 acres within Dreher Park, generally located east of Interstate 95, approximately 970 feet north of Summit Boulevard, from community service to community service plan development, declaring this zoning map amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflicts clause and providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Takes care of item 10.2. Let's return to item 10.1. It's to be continued, so I need a motion, please.
Mayor, I move to continue item number 10.1 to the city commission meeting scheduled to commence at 5:01 PM November 13th, 2023, in the commission chambers located at 401 Clemata Street, West Palm Beach, Florida.
Second.
It's been moved and second at discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Item 10.3, Resolution Number 157-23, a request by Joni Brinkman of Urban Design Studio on behalf of Palm Beach Atlantic University, Inc., for the abandonment of a 0.3 acre or 12,596 square foot portion of the Gruber Place right-of-way located west of and perpendicular to South Olive Avenue.
Mayor Commissioners, Linda Louis, Senior Planner for the record. This is another item that staff is requesting be presented with item number 10.4, since both items are related as well.
All right, so let me read 10.4 into the record. 10.4, Public Hearing of Resolution Number 158-23 Regarding a Major Amendment to the Palm Beach Atlantic University, PBAU, Community Service Plan Development, CSPD, to amend the master plan and provide for the construction of a six-story, 125,915 square-foot School of Business building. Ms. Brinkman?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Again, for the record, Joni Brinkman with Urban Design Studio on behalf of Palm Beach Atlantic University. I do have with me here tonight representatives from the university, including Dr. Schwinn. Also, our consultants from Camille Horn, as well as Leo A. Daly, in regards to traffic, engineering, and architecture. I know that you all are familiar where the university CSPD, another CSPD, is located within the city, south of Okeechobee, between Dixie and Flagler, with the majority of the property being east, west of Olive Avenue. The subject site that we're talking about tonight is actually just east of Chadborn Court and incorporates a parking lot area south of the Warren Library, as well as some open space and some areas associated with Gruber Place right-of-way. This area here is what's the subject of the first resolution that you read in regards to the abandonment request. We had submitted to the city staff and review, they were reviewed and supported the traffic analysis that was submitted with it, and have no objections to the abandonment. A little bit about PBA, they were founded in 1968 within the city. It's a faith-based private university with a downtown campus currently of 19.11 acres, which will be included in 19.4 with the addition of the abandonment. They have an campus for their athletic facilities over on Parker Avenue, 76 acres in size. They also have satellite campuses in Orlando and online programs. And PBA is very proud of the fact that their faith-based programs have completed and their students and faculty 3.8 million hours of community service within the city and Palm Beach County over the years. Again, the request before you tonight is to vacate approximately 12,596 square feet of Gruber Place to allow that land area to be incorporated into the business school development, and a major plan development amendment to the CPSD to allow for the construction of the, this school of business via Resolution 158-23, which again was 125,915 square feet and six stories in height. There is no increase to the number of students associated with this request. They're simply building a more conducive academic building for their school of business. The planning board did hear this application, recommended approval at their June 20th Planning Board meeting. While they were not the regulatory body on the recommendation of the abandonment, they were made aware of it, and they did not voice any concerns in that regard. Again, the proposed site, this shows the relationship to Olive Avenue, the street case, streetscape and pedestrian environment is going to be created with the new building fronting on Olive Avenue, a circular vehicular area to the south of the business school that will maintain an emergency connection as well to the remainder of Wallingford Place and Gruber Place. And it shows the library to the north with the back of the house for both the library and the new business school situated between the two buildings. Again, the master plan is just simply now showing the abandonment of Gruber, as well as the new building proposed on the site plan. Renderings from Leo A. Daly are provided here to show you the architectural aesthetic of the building that's being proposed, and that is the area fronting on Olive Avenue. And very proud to have the Marshall and Vera Lee Rinker Hall designation on the new school of business, similar to their athletic facility as well. Again, just another rendering. Traffic evaluation, we are not proposing any increased enrollment, so we did receive a letter from Palm Beach County in that regard. And again, the volumes were, of the street segments in the area were analyzed by Camille Horn as part of a diversion analysis that demonstrated that the abandonment will not impact the traffic in the area. That Gruber Place was really basically used by the university for the past many, many years, anyway. Parking. We had been conditioned via our last development order amendment to the campus to provide an annual parking study. That condition is also included in here, which is a demand and supply study to be submitted to the city prior to the start of each school year. While we are removing some parking spaces to affect the construction of this building, the parking study and staff's assessment and the off-site leases that we have in place provides, still provide sufficient parking supply for the campus. Again, staff is recommending approval of the abandonment and the major amendment in regards to the CSPD. We are in agreement with all the conditions of approval in both of those resolutions. We do have letters to support various, from various neighbors in the area, including the Frisbee Group, the Norton Museum, and of course, Family Church that is immediately to the east of us across Olive Avenue. As a longtime member, the contributor to the West Palm Beach community, PBA, is poised for continued growth and service to the community, and we appreciate the consideration this commission and the staff has given us in that regard, and look forward to serving the community for decades to come. That concludes my presentation. As I mentioned, we do have our consultants here in case you have any questions, and I know that staff has a presentation as well.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant before we hear from staff? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Brinkman. Staff?
Mayor and Commissioners, Linda Louis, Senior Planner for the record. So just to quickly recap, the first resolution is for 157-23, which is for the abandonment of a portion of Gruber Place. This abandonment is necessary for the construction of the proposed school of business. For the abandonment, the applicant has agreed to pay the city in the amount of 2.6, 2.68 million for the abandonment. The second request is for the major plan development amendment for the Palm Beach Atlantic University Community Service Plan Development. Staff does not have any issues. The project does not seek any waivers. It's consistent with the zoning and land development regulations, and it's also consistent with the development regulations for the Palm Beach Atlantic University Community Service Plan Development Master Plan. Based on staff's findings and analysis, staff is recommending approval of Resolution Number 157-23 for the abandonment, as staff has found that the proposed abandonment has met the criteria for vacation enclosures. And staff is also recommending approval of Resolution Number 158-23 with the conditions as noted in the resolution, as staff has found that the major PD amendment complies with the amendment standards of our zoning code. As mentioned by the applicant, the applicant has agreed to all the conditions, which are minor in nature, they're primarily technical, so. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I just have a question about the payment. Can you tell us where, what fund that will go to?
I can speak to that. Commissioner Fox, I can speak to that. When the, the right-of-ways are purchased, that funding will go into the general fund discretionary fund balance, and we are anticipating having a discussion with the board at the July 31st work session.
Any other questions for staff? All right, hearing none. I will entertain a motion on item 10.3.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 157-23.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
They're moving the second at discussion. Yeah, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to President Schwinn for showing up today. I think that this says a lot. We're grateful for the university's partnership with the city. You know, great projects like this, in addition to just having your students here in the community is very helpful. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Item 10.4, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of Resolution Number 158-23 for a major amendment to the Palm Beach Atlantic University Community Service Plan Development to amend the master plan and provide for the construction of a school of business building, generally located west of South Olive Avenue between King's Court and Acacia Road. This motion is based upon the application submitted, the staff report, factual testimony, the recommendation of the planning board, and the findings that the request complies with the comprehensive plan and the standards in Section 94-32 of the city's zoning and land development regulations.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
They're moving the second at discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, it is now time for public comment. We have several cards, so we're just going to read three names at a time. Where are these? As I read your names, if you can make your way toward the podium, James Stanton, Sandy Makovic, and Erica Elliott are the first three names. James Stanton, Sandy Makovic, and Erica Elliott. Mr. Stanton?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you tonight. I sincerely appreciate it. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners-
Just state your name for the record, sir, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. James Stanton, and I'm a resident of West Palm Beach. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the community of West Palm Beach needs your help. We need your help in protecting and preserving the beautiful waterfront from Marina developers. We need your help in protecting open- We need your help in protecting open space and protecting the environment of the waterfront. We need your help in providing and protecting equity, inclusion, and diversity of the waterfront. By allowing a developer to build 80 or 100 slips, that actually benefits just a very narrow segment of the population, and many of the owners of the slips may not even be West Palm Beach residents. I know we want to be a sustainable city, an inclusive city, and actually, those marina slips is the opposite of that. It blocks inclusion to the enjoyment of that waterfront. Downtown West Palm Beach movie night on the green, families walking along the waterfront, having ice cream, looking at nature, enjoying nature, that'll be blocked by those boats. So, the community is asking for your help in protecting that. So, we need your help in creating a preservation plan for future generations of the downtown waterfront. Let's not have your legacy be the ones that gave away essentially one of the most beautiful and precious natural resources the city has. Don't let your legacy be that you gave that away to marina developers to only benefit a few. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Sandy Makovic, West Palm Beach. I'm asking what this gentleman asked, preserve our waterfront. Attorney Cunningham filed an official protest after city commissioners and the mayor voted five to one on June 5th to move forward with negotiations with City Harbor to build and operate a luxury marina on the downtown waterfront, and cited several irregularities in the process, including that Informa, the company which runs the annual boat show and who he says is a partner of City Harbor, improperly lobbied the commission and mayor ahead of the vote. You know that happened. City procurement official Donna Levingood denied his protest, saying he filed it after the seven-day deadline. Where was city attorney Kimberly Rothenberg's opinion on this? Cunningham appealed, saying he did not receive a letter from Levingood giving official notice of the bid going to City Harbor, and the city didn't start ticking until he received it. Again, where was city attorney Kimberly Rothenberg's opinion? Levingood responded, saying several members of Safe Harbor were at the June 5th meeting where the rankings were announced and denied his reconsideration. Was it up to Safe Harbor to spread the word? Sounds like the city dropped the ball again. However, good news, she has scheduled a special meeting of the city commissioners to address Safe Harbor appeal on July 31st, and in the meantime, has halted negotiations. City Commissioners, you have the power to stop this in its tracks. It takes two of you to call a special meeting, and you all have to show up, because I'll tell you what, in early 2024, three of yous are up for reelection. Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Lambert, and Commissioner Fox. As far as residents are concerned, Commissioner Fox, you're walking on water. If you don't want to get reelected, keep playing the mayor's game. But so help me, if you don't do something to stop this, we're coming after you, and we're gonna put somebody up against you to run, to run against you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Erica Elliott?
Yes. Thank you. My name is Erica Elliott, and I reside at 201 South Narcissus Avenue, Unit 704. City Commissioners and kind residents of our community, today I stand before you as a concerned citizen to register my objection into the public record for the very first time. I do this because in my view, there are far-reaching consequences to your recent vote to install the new marina on our internationally recognized downtown waterfront. For the past eight years, I have lived in District 3 at the Espinade Grand, a condo building directly facing the intercoastal located on De Tora. My husband and I both have lived in the county for 23 and 18 years respectively, so we have witnessed many changes here over the years. But, this marina issue became my personal tipping point, as this is about our city community's lasting legacy for future generations. We know the old sayings, you can't fight change, or you can't fight City Hall, but I respond with this, Helen Keller's words, "Together, we can do so much." And this is why I've written every commissioner a letter and do the public record, and it's why I'm standing here today. This is a complex issue, and there are many stakeholders that have not had their fair share of practical input. Not on how and when, but on if the marina is the best and highest use of our beautiful public asset. As taxpayers and voters, we have the moral responsibility to ask hard questions of our civil servants, such as why is there such haste? What is our city's legacy? What are all the ways we could raise revenues for city services? How should we embrace change? How does this fit into our master plan, if at all? And I do appreciate the mayor's offer for establishing a water view committee. I think that's a great first step. If we think in commercial terms, our revenue streams are all tied directly and indirectly to this crown jewel, these waterfront long views of water and skies. I am a CPA and a tax advisor, and I know teams of actuaries who would love to consult on this kind of assignment to put an estimated value on what we actually have in our waterfront before we sign it away in long-term leases. This magnificent waterfront sets us apart from other cities on the Treasure Coast, such as Fort Lauderdale. I ask for your consideration. Let's reboot, reboot. Let's think about our community's legacy. We are definitely leaving a footprint, so what exactly do we want that to be? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have three other names, Janet Gerds, Robert Gerds, and Jody Young.
Harriet Yanen, Two-City Plaza. The Boat Show Marina is nothing more than an attempted smash and grab of our beautiful and nationally acclaimed waterfront. The origin of this hot mess was an unsolicited proposal from City Harbor to build a commercial public marina. You have to admire the audacity in the idea to build it, and those deep money pockets will come. The coordination of city officials and City Harbor is obviously in the plan and preparation. Two proposals were pitched and ranked. It was obvious that this was a complete setup by all commissioners to save one, to shamelessly make City Harbor the winner. It really was a study in how not to run city business or a selection process. All softball questions lobbed to City Harbor were prepared well ahead of time, and City Harbor had prepared replies. The only honest representative of the people was Commissioner Fox, but she was alone. She valiantly knew this ranking was a sham and refused to vote, wanting no part of this lobbying mob, but was forced and did vote. Now it was Safe Harbor's turn to present. It was such an obviously, obvious railroad job, such a stacked deck, they never had a snowball's chance. Excellent job of content and preparation, very experienced, better selection from a financial review and engineering design. The poor Safe Harbor people were savaged by the commissioners in concert. Again, this was rehearsed and coordinated by the mayor and commissioners. Let me summarize. Boat Show makes big boatfuls of money, but tired of renting expensive portable docks and wants a perpetual boat-selling platform can make even higher piles of cash. City Harbor coordinates with select few city officials to engineer getting Boat Show Marina. City officials were miracles to keep out of public scrutiny. Large chunk of money, 45,000, thrown into PAC Campaign Financing Committee that shares the same fundraiser of the mayor and commissioners who voted for City Harbor Marina. In closing, the city really stepped in it regarding this Boat Show Marina fiasco. This was pushed by one individual that was painfully, obviously. We are trading the loss of the priceless waterfront for the comparatively few pennies, 45K, that goes into Keith James Campaign Fund. Enough is enough.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, please say no to this project.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, now the three names. Janet Gerds, Robert Gerds, and Jody Young.
Hi there. My name is Janet Gerds. I live at 201 South Narcissus Avenue in the Espinade Grand, which is right downtown and directly across the street from where the marina is planned. My great-grandparents helped settle South Florida. My dad and I were born at Good Sam, so we've seen a lot of changes over the years, but none have been more impactful than what we've done with the waterfront. When we redeveloped the waterfront, citizens, government historians, designers, all the stakeholders got together, and they had over 120 meetings to create the promenade that we all love. It won international awards, local, regional, national, design awards, and it boosted tourism, and it boosted a desire to live downtown. I live downtown. My husband and I walk our dogs on the waterfront five times a day, and you know, it just, it gives us joy. It gives us a sense of community. Everybody is there. You hear multiple languages, all ages, people from everywhere are down there enjoying the waterfront. As a resident and as a realtor, I oppose the marina, because I believe it will harm the quality of life that we all enjoy, and I also believe it will depress property values. Why would we want to harm this magnet? I'm asking you, the city commission, to please table this proposal for a marina, not to ask the citizens how or when, but to stop it. We've never asked the question whether we should have it, and that is the right question. That is the question that all of the citizens need to weigh in on, and I ask you to please give us that opportunity. And if the citizens say no, please listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Gerds?
Yes, Robert Gerds, 201 South Narcissus. Her husband, she actually only does one of those walks. I get four a day, walking that waterfront with our dogs. Really, two issues. One is that it is for all of us about if, not how. It's if we do this, not how we do it. That's what the public input needs to be about, and that's issue number two, that there wasn't any. And so I know, obviously, you've all heard that very loud and clear, but again, it's not about how we do it. Take that step back to if, then we'll all be glad to have the conversations, however they turn out, however they turn out. So, that's my vote, but right now, I would say, please rescind the vote to negotiate until we have that input. Thank you.
All right. Jody Young? Jody Young? All right, so I've got three, I'm gonna read out three more names. Warren Robbins, Rabbins, Molly Robbins, and Gail Levine. Warren? Is he here? Okay. He wrote, "Do not understand how a historic waterfront could go to a commercial enterprise. Has spoken to numerous people who do not live on the water, but enjoys the waterfront as it is and do not want change." Okay? Molly Robbins. "The marina project needs to be openly discussed with the public for input and vote." All right, Gail Levine?
Here I am. Hi. Gail Levine, South End. First of all, I'd like to give kudos to Joan Goldberg. Joan Goldberg was the designer, the creator of the waterfront, and as the other individual had stated, there were numerous meetings where the community was involved. Also, I lived on a boat for 20 years, seven months of the year on Fire Island. I know the style of living. It's a wonderful lifestyle. However, the marina at the foot of Clemata Street, I do not believe is appropriate to create lifestyle of marina living. First of all, I'm sure you don't even realize that if you have boats there, you have repair trucks. You have boats that constantly have problems and need an onslaught of different repair individuals to come to that location. Also, those boats have visitors, they have guests. Where are they going to park their car? There are a lot of elements to this that are negative. The waterfront should stay just as it is. Also, the dynamics, excuse me, of boat living is one which is party time. You will have a very different dynamic when you have a regular harbor, marina harbor. These are things that have to be taken into consideration. I am not in favor of it. I love the lifestyle of living on a boat. It was the joyous years. It is not the right style for us in West Palm Beach. Thank you.
Timothy Schultz, Jeremy, Timothy Schultz, Hansel and that Wilkes, does not, okay. All right, none of these do not want to speak. Our Harry Jennings, we heard, she didn't want to speak, okay. All right, Mr. Schultz, come up, because I need to, many of these don't want to speak, but I'll read them.
I am, Mr. Mayor.
Very good.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. My name is Timothy Schultz. I live at 101 North Clemata Street, right above Pistache Restaurant in downtown West Palm Beach. My view is a fourth-floor unobstructed view of the intercoastal waterway, and I love that view. I recently left the Board of Directors of my condominium association, and one thing I learned that when I was in a position of making decisions, is that my decisions affect many other people, whether I agree with them or not. My decision would affect members of my apartment complex. Here, as the mayor and commissioners, your decisions affect tens of thousands, even hundreds of thousands of people around the city of West Palm Beach. Last week, I had the opportunity to meet a potential purchaser of one of the units in my building, and when I asked him, "What did you think of the building?", his very first comment was, "What a beautiful view that building has." That is the same sentiment I get when people come to my apartment or my condo for the first time. They look out my window and my sliding glass doors, and I overlook the park and the fountains and the beautiful intercoastal waterway with an unobstructed view, and they all have the same comment, "What a great view you have." If you look at sale brochures for the 101 loss, the Espinade Grand, the Strand, they all mention as an amenity, what a beautiful view that you will have if you buy here. It's in all the brochures all the time. It's always about the view of the intercoastal. I visit my friend often at the Strand and sit on his balcony, and we discuss what a beautiful view we have of the intercoastal. And I say all of this because I think one of our most precious amenities downtown is the unobstructed waterfront view. And your decisions going forward on this marina project will affect all of us. I believe it will affect property values. I believe it will affect my property value in a negative way. And I think as you go forward and as we move forward with discussions on that issue, some of the criteria you all must think about, does your decision to have a marina on the downtown waterfront affect you directly? Do you have a downtown waterfront view that will affect you both aesthetically and also monetarily? Does it affect your pocketbook? I think it will affect mine negatively, because I think my property value will go down, because that is the selling point of the condominiums all around the park and overlooking the intercoastal. It's the view of the intercoastal. That's the moneymaker. That's what brings the property values up. That's what people love. I don't see any... I don't see any public benefit to a Marina for the public at large. I walk past the Palm Harbor Marina regularly. We walk along the walkway there. It's all private docks, it's all locked. There's no public amenities and no public access, nothing. And so, in closing, I would ask-
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, three more names. Satima Fowler, Rick Rose, and Cynthia Nally.
Hello. My name is Satima Fowler from six hundred South Dixie. Good evening, Mayor James and City Commissioners. Thank you for this time to hear me. I come before you today to express a vital request regarding the future of our waterfront. Our waterfront holds a special place in my heart and to many residents, based on the twenty-five hundred people that already signed a petition against it. By the way, most of them, if not all, live in our town. And, you know, it's crucial that we carefully consider any changes that may impact this natural beauty and the community value. I urge the City Commission to prioritize the desires of the public and take the following steps in the best interest of our community. I like your idea, Mayor James, about the public input. However, with the Marina project still active, you can't have an effective outreach. So first and foremost, I kindly request the city to cancel the current Marina bid immediately. The Marina is not something we want. I want to see my serene waterfront as I walk and not a boat parking lot. By canceling the current bid, we can avoid unnecessary conflicts and foster an environment of trust and collaboration with the community. Only after the Marina project is canceled, and only then, can we have truly meaningful public meetings. This project is upside down. By placing public meetings after canceling the current Marina bid, we can demonstrate that the City Commission values the concerns and aspirations of the community. It will reflect a commitment to transparency and public involvement. Although I know you don't need public input in the decision-making process, but this is our beloved waterfront you're talking about. In conclusion, I urge each member of this Commission to take these requests seriously and let us prioritize the cancellation of the current Marina bid and subsequently initiate public meetings to activate the waterfront thoughtfully and responsibly and without any bias. Thank you for this time and consideration, and let's work together to preserve the natural beauty and the communal significance of our cherished waterfront. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Rick Rose.
Good evening, Commission Mayor. My name's Rick Rose, six hundred South Dixie Highway. I'd like to thank the mayor for acknowledging the need for public input before moving forward with any development on the waterfront. The downtown waterfront is the oldest park and public amenity in our city, dating back to the incorporation in eighteen ninety-four, and every city administration and commission since our founding has protected that area of the waterfront and kept it free for the enjoyment for the public at large. I agree with the mayor that we must also avoid misinformation, so let's not deceive the public about what is happening with the Marina proposal. Excluding key information is also misleading, and you mentioned that the proposed Marina would only be a small portion of the waterfront. Well, in fact, if you just look at the plans that they've presented on June fifth, you can easily see that it's a massive Marina, at least as large in area as the Palm Harbor Marina, encompassing the public docks, of course. So what's additionally worrisome is that the city administration has failed to mention to the public and the Commission at the meeting on June fifth that other property owners along that same waterfront have riparian rights right in the same area there. Holy Trinity, for example, has riparian rights for a forty-slip Marina on the south side of the Cove Islands. And I'm certain that the city also knows that there are other property owners with riparian rights on the north side of the Cove Islands. So basically, if this Marina were to be built, the entire waterfront between the two bridges would be one massive Marina. But the main issue is that the City Commission should not have approved a commercial development on a public park without ensuring prior public support. That's really never happened in our city's history, at least not in modern history. You'd have to really go back far to try to find an example, when the City Commission gave up a public park or a public amenity without ensuring that there's broad public support before that vote, not just a few people, broad public support for that public amenity. So the public meetings you're proposing, without withdrawing the procurement process first, would be tainted, knowing that the city administration wants the Marina above any ideas? Since you, Mayor, did suggest that at that June fifth meeting, that you thought it would be a good idea to have that Marina? So please withdraw and cancel the procurement of a new Marina, full stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cynthia Nally.
Hi, Cynthia Nally, six hundred South Dixie Highway, West Palm Beach. First, let's do the positive. Thank you so much for the recent Jazz in the City program. That was fantastic, and it was exactly the kind of thing we want to see, and it brought everybody together, so we really appreciate that. And thank you also for forming a, you know, Waterway Community Group. I look forward to participating in that. Mayor, you stated that you've been working for years on the Marina proposal, so that means that significant tax dollars have been spent for tailor engineering and others to perform the due diligence without even asking the public if we wanted a Marina. So those are sunk costs. And the lack of public outreach really puzzles me, because I work with the Parks Department a lot, and they're great. But I actually think it's very difficult to get projects done through them because of their insistence on the public outreach. I've been trying to get something done in Jose Marti Park, for example, for three years. We've been trying to get them to put some fitness equipment, because we wanted to popularize it as this, you know, trail, biz, bridge-to-bridge fitness trail. And we can't get it done, because they keep wanting to do public outreach, even though we've done surveys and all kind of, you know, events there. It's more public outreach. So that kind of doesn't make sense when you think about that the plans for downtown's most important park on the waterfront have been done totally behind closed doors and in supposedly a cone of silence. Even the Parks and Recreation Board didn't know anything about it. Does that seem right to all of you? Is that the way we do things here in West Palm Beach? Or are we transparent? Are we collaborative? Let's consider this unsolicited bid as an experiment that taught us the value of public outreach. Let's move on from it and withdraw and cancel the procurement process, and then go out and do the public outreach and get the public support. We're here for you. We would love to talk about what we want to see on the waterfront. Thanks.
Thank you. Three more names. Leah Escobar, Mike Schmidt, and Rona Hyman.
Hello. Leah Escobar, Palm Beach County, West Palm Beach. The Marina project is one that we should all be watching very carefully, because something just doesn't add up. We should all have been suspicious when Mayor Keith James called a special City Commission meeting on Monday, June fifth, at nine AM. A Monday at nine AM, a time difficult for most of us with day jobs to attend, especially without prior notice. During this meeting, only proposers were invited to be present. Their vision for the development for a Marina or waterfront was to be presented. Not only do we no longer have a portal for public comment during City Commission meetings, since the mayor conveniently shut it down when he was being contested for reelection, but during that meeting, no public comment was allowed by the mayor. No public comment. That should make us all question his motives, especially since he's still being investigated by the Florida Commission of Ethics. This proposed Marina development would significantly impact view, character, and functionality of our most valuable asset, which is the waterfront. It is valued and needed by residents and visitors alike. I have a friend, for example, who takes walks along the intercoastal to recharge and connect with nature right after her chemo treatments, and she happens to live in Boynton Beach. So to say that only the residents of Palm Beach County have a say, so it's actually pretty ignorant. We recently sent a petition that has nearly twenty-five hundred signatures already. We petition that you cease any negotiations for commercial Marina development on the downtown waterfront. It is your duty to always ensure broad public support before negotiating commercial developments on this or any other public land, park, or venue that affects its residents, as many of those people here have said. I ask the mayor and City Commissioners to be very clear as to how you're forming this committee or this group you spoke about, to be transparent about how you're selecting these individuals, what businesses they're tied to, what affiliations they have, or any others that they may know that are benefiting from the development. Our fears that Mayor Keith James will conveniently pick a committee of people who expect his retaliation, as he always makes it clear, that he's not to be messed with, and has proven that he sends his wrath against anyone who does not agree with him. I ask you to please open up the website portal again so that people are able to ask questions, raise concerns, and speak during or before Commission meetings. These are people that have disabilities, children at home are taking care of a sick one or loved one at home. We are, you are elected officials, and it boggles my mind how often you shut the voices of those who put you in your position. Please hear our voices.
Thank you very much. Mike Schmidt.
Thanks. I just wanted, you know, to remind people of things that they already know, but, I mean, we all just really love that waterfront. I mean, when people come to visit, and bear in mind, I live at three fifteen Hibiscus Street, I'm Mike Schmidt, by the way. We don't have any kind of a waterfront view, we just live in a little two-story house on Hibiscus Street. But when we have people visit from out of town, people dig that waterfront, they love it, they love walking down there, they're all ooh and ah of that nice, beautiful S-curve, and, man, gee, I wish I certainly had that, you know, thank God it hasn't turned into Lauderdale, you know? That's the overwhelming comment we get, and I think part of the reason why people are excited, shall we say, about this issue is we're terribly concerned about turning into Fort Lauderdale, you know? We don't want to have wall-to-wall Marinas blocking the views. Everybody knows that the Marinas are for a select few. Everybody knows that if that Marina is built, that the public will not have full access to it, they'll have a very, very, very minimal access to it. So the guy with the hundred-foot boat and the dirty martini, he's going to be totally digging it. The guy who builds the Marina and manages the Marina and pockets that, you know, the fees for mooring there, he's going to be digging it too. But the public is not going to be enjoying it. They haven't asked for it, they don't want it. It's just going to, it's going to interfere with something that's been cherished for a long time, especially since, if you dial back several years ago, when that old library was torn down, that received unanimous approval from the public, because it was a huge improvement. Everybody loved that new park, and now we're just terribly afraid that people are going to ruin that unobstructed, beautiful view that was the intention of tearing down the old library in the first place years ago. So please, don't ruin the view, don't turn us into Lauderdale. That's the only reason why we have ants in our pants about this, okay? Please, thank you.
Thank you very much. Roger Hyman. Rona wrote, "Disagree vehemently regarding Marina expansion, additional traffic, noise, blocking water views. Development has been thoughtless. Library relocated to open water view with tax dollars." Okay, that's Rona, Roger Hyman. All right, I'll read out three more names. Lourdes Harrington, Jerry Eubank, and Cheryl Dunn.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for listening to me today. My name is Lourdes Harrington. I have proudly lived here for over twenty years. I'm not in favor of this waterfront Marina. The downtown waterfront should be considered sacred. We worked really hard for it years ago, and we all enjoy it. For many, many years, residents, families, tourists have all walked along it, rode bikes along it, exercised along it, and just absolutely enjoy it. The view is beautiful, and it strongly represents the downtown and the waterfront as a whole. It's the people's waterfront and the pinnacle of the beginning of Clematis Street. We should leave it alone and let the people and tourists continue to enjoy the beautiful, unobstructed water view as it was intended. I understand the Boat Show is threatening us to leave us, to leave West Palm Beach. Is that why you're considering this? We cannot allow the Boat Show to dictate what we do with our waterfront for their profits. The waterfront is where we, the people, play, where we are proud of most. Please don't take it away. No need to cater to mega yachts in this particular area. We have many other areas for Marinas. They already exist on either side. In fact, what about all the damage to the area it would do? For years, we've worked so hard to strengthen that area to the water. And what about all the disgusting waste these yachts would leave? The fact that we are even considering this is absolutely wrong. As a mom and a resident, I take my kids there, I play there, I ride there, we all do. It's just such a beautiful area, it's just for us. Everybody has taken condos and office buildings, and I understand the growth, and I love the growth. I live on Flagler, but this is just sacred. So I ask that you please not consider this Marina. Please leave it as it is. It was intended to be enjoyed by the people of West Palm Beach. Leave it to the people of West Palm Beach. Please let us continue to enjoy it, this unobstructed little area that is left of the waterfront. We all worked very hard to secure the now beautiful, open waterfront space. We don't want to lose it. It's unique to South Florida's beaches, cities. Why take it from the residents of West Palm Beach and sell it off? The open green space at the end of Clematis is inherently tied to the open waterfront to its east. It flows beautifully, and we all enjoy it every single day. Again, Marinas block views, create environmental issues that we have worked so hard to replenish. At the very least, a detailed environmental impact study and a vote from the people should be considered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name's Jerry Eubank. I will be brief. Our downtown waterfront park is the preeminent and most visible amenity of West Palm Beach. It is unique in southeast Florida, and what most differentiates our beautiful city from the downtown areas of Fort Lauderdale and Miami. Rarely is so much direct, unobstructed waterfront access preserved for residents and visitors to enjoy. We are extremely grateful to prior city officials for having the foresight to preserve this irreplaceable community asset. We ask you to continue the stewardship of our beautiful waterfront. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. Cheryl Dunn, downtown resident and business owner. The proposed Marina project will negatively affect the downtown residents on a daily basis. There is simply nothing in it for us. Our beloved waterfront is a generous host to national and international guests who come specifically to enjoy our magnificent downtown, which is a tour and travel destination. The waterfront is an economic powerhouse. It generates income for our downtown businesses, hotels, and the Palm Beach County Convention Center. At the same time, it hosts fundraising races for several charities, such as the American Cancer Society, Autism, American Heart Association, and many other critical causes. The West Palm Beach waterfront hosts nationally acclaimed events, such as Sunfest, Fourth on Flagler, Supercar Week, cultural festivals, Green Market, Sunday on the Waterfront, Clematis by Night, award-winning fireworks shows, and much more. Our waterfront allows West Palm Beach the opportunity to compete against other cities for convention business. All of these events are providing jobs for the West Palm Beach residents- All of these events are providing jobs for the West Palm Beach residents so they can feed their families and pay taxes to support our city. West Palm Beach residents and business owners trust that our elected officials will make responsible decisions based on the best interests of their constituents. I am asking Mayor James and the Commissioners to make the responsible choice and immediately halt negotiations on the marina project indefinitely. Thank you.
Let me read out three more names. Catalina Orellana. Richard Picarella. And Lynn Iry. Catalina.
My name is Catalina Orianna. I am a resident of West Palm Beach for 27 years. Seven years of those have been here downtown West Palm Beach. I want to express my deep concern and strong opposition to the downtown West Palm Beach waterfront marina project recently imposed without any public input. As a concerned resident of this community, I believe it is essential to ensure that decisions of such magnitude are made with transparency and active involvement from the citizens they will directly impact. The lack of public in, input in this process is disheartening and does not align with the principles of a democratic and inclusive society. This marina project can have significant consequences on the environment, local businesses, traffic, and the overall quality of life for residents. Therefore, it is crucial the residents have the opportunity to voice the opinions, ask questions, and express their concerns before such a project is even allowed to be lobbied and approved. Mayor James, since you have expressed strong support to this project, I urge you and the city commission to reconsider, reconsider its decision and take immediate steps to, instead of halting negoti, negotiations with City Harbor LLC, to withdraw and cancel the procurement process before starting a public discussion. Transparency is key in fostering trust and confidence among the ci, the citizens you serve. Instead of telling us what we are getting, allow us to tell you what we want. Your willingness to listen to the voices of the residents, residents will undoubtedly strengthen our community and lead to better outcomes for everyone involved. As a community, we must work together to build a future that is sustainable, inclusive, and beneficial to all residents. I would like the city to withdraw and cancel the procurement process before starting a public discussion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Richard Picarella. Richard Picarella. Okay, Lynn Iry.
Good evening, Mayor James and Commissioners. I'm Lynn Iry, and to tell you the truth and be perfectly honest, when I heard about the possibility of this happening, I, I really could hardly even sleep. I know the history of how this all started, how the beautiful, it is the biggest asset to our West Palm Beach area. I know for a fact the visitors, the things that are happening out there, the diversity of people that don't even have an opportunity to go out on a dock, are walking out on a dock when they leave from the Clematis Street, and they're appreciating it. They're, they're looking at the light streaming in on the water. They're seeing the, the sunlight on it in the morning, the, you know, it's just incredible to me, the numbers of people. We're always hanging around downtown. People get off the Bright Line train, and the first thing they want to do is get over to the waterfront. And the, like, the amenities, the, the things that happen, the Green Market, the, the, the bicycles going along on Sunday morning, they have a major thing going on. And I'll tell you the truth, I was just shocked and disillusioned and dismayed to think that this would even be considered, um, to be perfectly honest. It's just, um, um, I'm, everybody I meet, everybody that visits, all the people we meet who just are here visiting and, and living on it, um, it is, they're just overwhelmed with the beauty of this gem that can't be replaced. If this turns into a bunch of boats with diesel fuel, gasoline, um, maintenance things happening all the time, it'll never be the dream that it is right now. And whenever anybody's having a hard day, what's the first thing a lot of them do? You walk on the waterfront. It cannot, it's got to stop. This cannot happen. This will be regretted by anybody that favors having this continue. So I just please ask you to stop, think about all of the assets of it, the history of it, and keep what we have. It will never be able to be replaced. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Michael Weiner and Juan Orellana. Michael Weiner.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael Weiner, Weiner, that's not the important thing. I'm here on behalf of the Slade. Um, I'm with the firm of Saxax and Kaplan. Just immediately north of Slade, um, north of 1525 Flagler, um, Slade is located across from a public park. 1525 Flagler, unassociated with the marina that you've been discussing, has put in an application for a dock that will measure almost a football field out into the intercoastal. They need relief because there is grasses that have to be protected. That dock was considered by your planning commission, but there were substantial errors that were made in the staff report. We would like to make a presentation. We have put in a letter about being an aggrieved party. We think that it would be far better to be able to make a presentation in a manner that would allow us not to be interrupted with three minutes, but to make the full presentation there on behalf of the Slade. There are some really critical errors that were made in the, in the staff report, and I, I don't know. We didn't know we were getting caught up in any type of, of actual larger marina, uh, project, but whatever it was, this smaller marina project seemed to be glossed over. The legal descriptions are wrong. There, as is shown on the property appraiser's site, there is no submerged lands, and yet that's what showed in the application. And in fact, your own, um, uh, staff report does show the smaller portion that is in the county, uh, records, but yet goes on to talk about the larger, uh, description. The existence of federal and state approvals. One of them is, has expired, and we're actually in the period of time where they'd have to be in construction and complete construction. There's questions about SWIFTMUD, um, whether the report is due or not due, and there's errors. But probably even more importantly than anything else, the staff report goes on to say it met the comprehensive plan. So just a moment, I've got 56 seconds left. Goal three, the comprehensive plan. The city shall maintain or enhance public access to coastal resources in accordance with the public need. A subpoint, policy. The city shall continue to ensure that Flagler Drive is preserved as a scenic route of aesthetic qualities and discourage the proliferation of residential docks. Now, if that's not even described in the staff report, and here you are considering other marinas, and it says discourage the proliferation, how can you go forward with one dock to a commercial building, though it says that it's not a commercial dock, and take that on and confront it in a manner that only allows the Slade to have three-minute speeches? I've already taken three minutes. There are many more points that have to be expressed. I am sure that you would enjoy hearing this in a way that allows you to make sense of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Juan Orellana.
Hello, I'm Juan Orianna, 600 South Dixie Highway. A lot of people have expressed how beautiful our asset is for our waterfronts, so I'm not going to go through my whole speech. I'm just going to do some bullet points, and I'll be okay. As you all know, I am a board member for Connect West Palm Beach as well, and, but West Palm Beach is an advocacy group for public space, and myself, as a resident of the downtown area, we value our asset of our waterfront, and we try to activate it as just local residents. So I want to, um, share with you what we do, you know, to try to activate our waterfront. Every Monday, we have fresh brew coffee. So the idea is to come, grind your coffee, and see the sunrise on Mondays. And the idea of that is just to spend some time with your neighbor and start a, your week off, uh, work, you know, a little bit nice because it's proven that you look at the water, you kind of like have this mood uplifting feeling. It's kind of nice to, to start the week off that way. The other projects that we do is, um, the Plage. Uh, some of you have actually joined us, and it's, uh, basically a picnic at our waterfront. It's just bring your own food, bring a friend, and just enjoy some time with the friends. And that's some activities that is not city-funded, no major, you know, funder, but it's just residents trying to get together, know each other. Most, uh, residents here, I kind of know. So it's just nice to have that space, like a little blank canvas, for us to imagine whatever we want to imagine, but not a marina. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we have several cards here where the people did not wish to speak, but they wanted their comments made and read into the record, so I'm going to proceed. Sherry and Paul Elias. Christie Fox is to be commended for being truly representative of the residents. She is concerned about the future of our city. No to a future marina and no to destroying the beautiful city. Erin Warmus. The waterfront is not for sale. Please stop negotiations on the marina. Carol Steinfeld. A luxury marina is not needed in this location, nor is it warranted. I feel it would be best if the entire plan is halted and we go, uh, and we reconsider the shore-to-core plans. The entire city will benefit from, uh, both and all-inclusive, better in-all-inclusive plans for development on the waterfront. Lou Rodriguez. Cease negotiations on a commercial marina. This will be a blight aesthetically and environmentally on the downtown waterfront. Revive the shore-to-core initiative for all to enjoy and uplift the experience of living and visiting West Palm Beach. Michael Small. Regarding the recently discussed marina project, I believe public comment is critical and that a full impact study be performed before moving forward on any negotiation decision, move forward on any proposal. Barbara Landers. I absolutely oppose any new marina or the construction along the Flagler waterfront. Rhonda Green. I absolutely oppose any marina or new or other building being added to the downtown area along Flagler. Curtis Green, uh, Jr., opposed to new marina. Antranet Wilks. I do not want a marina. I do not want a marina. She doesn't want a marina. Alan Levine. Uh, I am completely against development of Clematis waterfront. Kathleen McPhillips. I am completely opposed to any negotiations regarding development of the downtown waterfront. This gem of our city must be left as it is. Cat Fox. Manatees, all fish life, all water life, they will not survive. Rona Hyman. Any truth to the rumor that the Green Market will be eliminated? No. Heard this from an upset vendor. Also, what development will be at the Palm Beach Atlantic University site? Roger Hyman. Status of marina litigation currently ongoing. Okay, so that's all the cards, and, uh, that's all the public comment. So now we will turn to comments from the Commissioners, and we will begin with President Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by saying a few other thank yous. Thank you to, um, all of the people that, uh, took the time to make appointments and come to see me, to come to meet with me, to educate me on, um, and share with me all of the rich history and information that you have. And I thank you to the people that took the opportunity to email me and those that are here today that, um, felt it very important to come and ensure that your voices are heard. I would like to say that, um, I do hear you. I'm, I'm, I'm hearing you, I'm listening to you. Your voices do matter. And I want to also start by saying that I have been inconsistent because I know that it is very important to have public outreach and public input. And I have fought for, um, us to have that, those, those conversations when, um, as, as needed, as appropriate, and to ensure that those conversations are happening regularly because people do not always feel heard, and when people don't feel heard, they don't feel valued. And, um, so I'm, I'm acknowledging that I have not been consistent in ensuring that everyone feels heard and feel valued from my own perspective. Um, and I'm, I'm not speaking for anyone else, only myself, and to say that I, I also understand the importance of statute, uh, 286.01142, where it says, "Members of the public shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard on a position before a board or commission. The opportunity to be heard need not occur at the same meeting at which the board or commission takes official action on the proposition," excuse me, "on the position if the opportunity occurs at a meeting that is during the decision-making process, and is within reasonable proximity and time before the meeting at which the board or commission takes the official action." So I do also understand that state statute, and, um, your voice is necessary, and it, and it's not just determined by this body, that is, of course, a state statute that recognizes the importance of the, the vote of the people. And that sitting on, in this seat, that my vote is not simply a vote that I have for myself, it is one that I do consider what people, um, present, and I consider the law, and I consider what it is that we have the opportunity to do. And I am, um, doing due diligence to make sure that as we move forward, that we're moving forward and doing things, um, that make the, the most sense for our city. And I, I only ask you that you allow me an opportunity to, um, to look at the judgment that I may have exercised and not count that as something where there is an act where my integrity is in question. Because I, there is nothing that I gain from anyone, and, and the decisions that I'm making, the decisions and the things that I do when I'm here, I'm hoping are the best representation of the people in the city of West Palm Beach. So, um, I do ask that you give me that opportunity. And, um, that's it. I do, I do understand, and I'm listening. So thank you very much. And, um, there are a few things that have happened, um, in the last week that I would like to share, um, some wonderful, some wonderful things. So congratulations on Rohy's Readery. Congratulations to Soul in the City. It was an amazing jazz event that took place at the Lake Pavilion, um, this past Wednesday with Nicole Parker, I believe is the name of the jazz musician that performed. It was a sold-out event. And I do, Nicole Henry, thank you very much. She was amazing. And, uh, the, their upcoming, um, jazz performances that will be taking place on our beautiful waterfront, uh, the last Wednesday of August and the last Wednesday of September. And I would also like to, um, acknowledge the 2023 Back to School PBC Backpack Drive that took place this past Saturday, and that was spearheaded by Mr. Houston Tate, where more than 6,000 children received backpacks and school supplies and haircuts and beauty services, and, um, they got their nails done and, uh, had massages, and, uh, the young ladies had their, their hair done, um, for back to school. And, uh, it was just a tremendous event to witness. I, when I attended it, I didn't know that it would be of that magnitude, but it was absolutely incredible to see how many people came together to, uh, ensure that children have what they need as they enter into this new school year. And we also had a great event at Gaines Park, which was the, It Takes a Village, um, Family Field Day, and that was hosted by the city of West Palm Beach. It was great to see the children out and have a, a last hurrah before returning to school to enjoy each other and to just be kids. Because so often, we forget what it is to be out in the sunlight and enjoy each other and, um, to, to play. And we were able to ensure that they had that opportunity before returning to the next school year. Upcoming events. And I don't want to, I know that the mayor has a lot that he's going to share, so I don't want to encroach upon what it is that he's going to mention. But, um, reminder that Tax Free Week is, um, tax-free. um, reminder that tax-free, uh, week is, um, tax-free back-to-school supplies starts today through Sunday, August the sixth, tax-free back-to-school supplies start today until Sunday, August the sixth. If you are a teacher in the city of West Palm Beach Public Schools, register for a free shopping spree at Rest Resource Depot, provided by the city of West Palm Beach's Sustainability Office on August third or fourth, between ten and one, there will be giveaways, raffles, and you can receive an extra fifteen percent off additional purchases, registration and core, uh, details can be found in our city's website. Congratulations to the green market again for being voted best farmer's market in the country on third year straight, and due to popular demand, as we've discussed, the mini-market is still occurring on Clematis by night and has been extended until August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So again, thank you all for coming out, thank you for sharing your voices and opinions, I do not know what the future holds, but I do want you to know that your voices are valued, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, I do want to say thank you to everyone who came out tonight, thank you to all who have signed the petition, it's up to about twenty-five hundred people, I believe, thank you for all the emails I've received, I've read every single one, I've tried to respond to everyone, I did vote no for the, the negotiations to move forward before. I voted no, not necessarily because I was opposed to the marina, but like someone said today, that we are making decisions that impact hun- hundreds of thousands of people, and I don't think that that was my decision to make without hearing the voices of all those, not just the downtown residents, but I've heard from many others since this vote, you know, I've heard questions about what are the environmental impacts, how many other properties have rights to build docks that we don't know about, what will happen to the charity events like the Bill Bone 5K and the Race for the Cure, have we celebrated our last fourth on Flagler event? And I don't honestly know the answer to any of those questions right now, I'm very pleased to hear that the mayor will be hosting these, um, additional outreach events, but I, I hear your concerns, because we want to be excited about what happens on the waterfront, we don't want it to just be a, a second thought about, um, we're being told that this is happening and we're just able to pick what color the docks are gonna be, um, so I am hopeful that we will all be able to participate and have our questions answered as these, um, as these meetings move forward, but I do want you to know that I will continue to support the residents, and, um, I have not changed my vote in any way, and we will have a final say, uh, before any contracts are signed, um, and so please continue to share the petition and have your friends contact us and let us know what the waterfront means to you, because I can en- assure you that I am reading every single one of your, uh, emails, I know our office is fielding several calls, and so I want you to continue to know that your voice is heard, and, um, I also do not know what the future will hold, but I want you to all be a part of it, and so, um, please don't give up, and, um, thank you for being here tonight, thanks, that's all.
Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by the comment that, um, I am up for reelection and that if I don't vote a specific way, that you'll find someone to run against me. Um, I don't handle threats very well, and frankly, I don't make my vote off threats, I make my vote off of listening to residents, to reviewing facts, discussing things with staff, reading reports, what you send me, I read, I call people back, I read what staff provides, I read a ver- a hefty amount of material, not every single word of that very big binder that we had for that June fifth meeting, um, so if there is somebody that you feel is going to represent you better, I, I open, I'm, I'm open to that, because that's democracy. Um, so I feel like that comment and the applause afterwards is essentially making the presumption that I'm purposely working against the residents, and I feel like, you know, while I'm not perfect, um, I feel like my actions have shown otherwise, so I, I was a little bit stricken by the, by the applause after that, um, and so I felt the need to say that, I will never, ever use a threat as a reason to not vote for something, I will use my reasoning based off of facts and communications, the way that I should be representing all of you. Um, Mayor, thank you for your comment earlier, I think the discussion about our waterfront is important, and, um, given all the communications that I've received, um, it's necessary with that in mind. I am concerned about the continued negotiations with City Harbor, um, as we don't know what will come from the community meetings, and I purposely, uh, personally, don't want to waste applicants' time and money if we decide on a different course of action. Um, and with that in mind, I'd like to propose a motion to postpone the proposed marina procurement with City Harbor until after the community meetings have been held by the city with the residents.
Second.
Uh, moved and seconded discussions. All right, all those in favor?
I have a question.
Yes.
For discussion. A city attorney, can you talk to us about any legal ramifications that we just need to consider, uh, just, I, I think that we all want to make sure that we have transparency with our community, uh, engagement, and so I, I, I seriously want to consider this motion, um, but I also want to make sure that we don't do anything that puts the city in jeopardy or further jeopardy.
Before I answer your question, I do want to make a statement, and that is, right now, there is not negotiations ongoing with the proposer, simply because of the protest that's been filed and agreement of the, um, procurement official under the code to stay or to stop the negotiations while the protest is pending, so there are no current, uh, negotiations, but I wanted to put that on the table. In order to really fully answer your question, you have-
Can I reply to that? Because I feel like you're gonna say something else that's really important as well, I don't mean to interrupt you, but that's a heavy statement there, ma- Mayor, Mayor.
You're gonna interrupt, okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
So you're saying, right now, there's not ongoing negotiations, but that's not saying that as soon as whatever is pausing those negotiations, that they won't eventually move forward, correct?
They could continue, uh, following the decision of the, this body, when it sits and decides on the protest that's before them. There are other alternatives to stay also, or to, um, work through that, but, so here, here's where I was going after that, did you have any follow-up questions as it relates to the stay?
No, that you answered the question, and I, just to clarify, so right now, we're not negotiating, but should the stay be released, then we, the city would be eligible to negotiate?
Correct, the negotiations could continue at that point. So, we started down a process that's outlined by the statute and the code that allows proposers to submit and to, um, undergo a process whereby they paid, they paid, um, I don't, I don't have the exact dollar value, but twenty-five thousand dollars to start, and then additional money for the city to evaluate the proposals, so we paid, uh, consultants with the money paid by the proposers to review those proposals, so they all have, uh, some money put in, in excess of the twenty-five thousand, because my recollection is that there was additional monies, uh, that was needed to continue the, um, review. That said, the statute goes on to say that, um, the proposals will be ranked, and following the ranking, that the, um, city would negotiate with the first-ranked firm, and should negotiations be unsuccessful, that the commission could determine to move to the second-ranked firm. In, in that statute, I would say there is a good faith obligation to continue on that path, could somebody bring suit, should we stop it? They could, will they? I don't know, um, but that is a potential possibility, uh, so, to answer your question, could somebody bring suit? They could. Are there other processes whereby we could engage the, um, proposer, the current proposer, to take a pause? Yes, if the statute also outlines that rather than going straight to the, um, comprehensive agreement, is what it calls, that we could agree to do an interim agreement that could outline what the process was for the community engagement in between the two, so that is a potential as well, after the stay is lifted and we get through all the protests, and so I hope I answered your question, if you have additional questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, question I have is, would they be in a position to conduct their own community outreach? You know, the motion was, we couldn't negotiate, uh, but does that, and maybe I'm asking the maker of the motion, would that prohibit them from going out and doing their own community outreach in this period of time?
That wasn't the intent of the motion.
I'm sorry?
That wasn't my intent of the motion, no.
Okay, okay. From a legal standpoint.
When you say "them," are you meaning the proposers themselves?
The proposer, City Harbor, I understood the motion to be that we could not negotiate, the city would not negotiate with them until after this, uh, community engagement that I propose is either completed or well underway. During that period of time, could City Harbor, because they're under the statute, could they then do their own community engagement to let people know about their proposal and ask any questions and that type of thing?
They could do community engagement, they may have some hesitation, um, if the, if there was a, a belief that, um, they were somehow, um, lobbying folks to sway your opinion, but that's, you know, speculation.
All right, okay, service say with say. All right, Commissioner Beduzzi.
I'm not necessarily opposed to this motion, um, I'm just concerned with, likewise, I'm concerned that we're doing this properly, because it seems like every step of the way, you know, we're stepping in something, and I just, I think we need to stop, stop that from continuing to happen, and, and I think that if we, if we move forward with this motion, um, I think we need to, to protect ourselves and protect the city, and make sure that we send a clear message then, that they shouldn't be expending a whole bunch of funds and doing a whole bunch of outreach, that eventually, if we decide that this is not something that we want to move forward with, it's going to be listed as a damage against the city, because we haven't, um, sent a clear message to put everything on hold. And I think it needs to, if we're gonna move forward with a motion like this, it needs to be sending a clear message, everyone should be putting it on hold, no, we can't tell them that they can, that they have to stop, uh, community engagement, but they have to be on notice that, you know, if we're putting a pause in this, it's for a reason, it may be because eventually, we're going to say that we don't want to move forward at all with this proposal, and I just don't want to see additional damages accruing against the city if they go out and do hundreds of thousands of dollars in public engagement.
But if we, if we send that clear message, as you say, does that undermine our obligation to negotiate in good faith under the statute? That seems to be handing them that lawsuit right away, I mean, we send that message and say, nope, we're not gonna talk to you, you can't talk to anybody, um, you know, as I, as I heard you, city attorney, that there is a good, obligation to negotiate in good faith, right, under the statute?
That's, that's the intent of the statute and the way it's written.
Okay, so if we send that clear, uh, uh, message, we're not gonna negotiate, that seems to be handing them a pretty hefty lawsuit. President, uh, Warren.
I, I, I understood the conversation to be that we were gonna initiate, as a city, the outreach and, uh, and do the, get the public input, that it was not going to be the, um, the proposer, but the city.
No, yes, that, that's correct, but they also have the right, if they chose, uh, to, to go out and begin educating the public on what they're doing, separate path, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do, from the city, what, what I said I was gonna do. Question is whether they now, you know, part of the, the issue here, has only been one side of the story that's been told, uh, and, you know, they presented something at the June fifth, uh, July, whatever the date was, meeting, but they, I don't think they've had a chance to really get their vision out there, and also to hear from the public, they, that's separate and apart from what I'm gonna do to try to, uh, come up with a, a, a vision, a plan for the, for the waterfront, so I was just asking, uh, pursuant, does the proposer, the motion, mean that they could not, if they chose, continue their public education or community engagement process? Commissioner?
And, and again, no, that wasn't my intent, I want to go back to June fifth, because I feel like we were very clear at that meeting on multiple occasions, that we have every right to terminate at any point, um, and, and that, that, I, I think is, is not misleading, and is not, is not, uh, damages, is very clear that we had the right, that after this period of time, to terminate, and in good faith, and to participate, and my other, my other comment to that is, is I just don't want us expending any more opportunity, we've had two meetings since before the protest was filed, from the summary that I was presented to, I think, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Minister Johnson, that there was two meetings that the city has had since June fifth, I don't want us expending any more of, of tax dollars on negotiations right now until we hear from the community, and that is my point. And so I, it's not, it's not to say that they, they as, as a company can go talk to whomever they want to talk to, as long as they're not soliciting and lobbying, um, in disregard of our requirements, but that is not the motion that I made.
There's two, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
There, there are two different things that were talked about, one thing, there is an absolute provision in the statute and the ordinance that says that at any time, the commission can reject all proposals and cancel the process, but that's different from what you asked, if we can postpone negotiations for a period of time, two separate things, I just wanted to make sure that's clear, and there was one meeting with initial, um, meeting with the proposers, uh, with the procurement division.
Thank you. Mayor follow-up?
Follow-up, yes.
Then I, I would like to make a motion to amend my motion and to terminate the procurement process completely.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been, uh, it's been moved and seconded, any other, Commissioner Beduzzi?
Just along the lines of, of what Commissioner, uh, Ward was speaking to, I think it was very clear that we were asking during this selection process, if at any time, we could put a stop to it and reject or, or end it, and I think it was pretty clear, absolutely you can, but the caveat to that is we do so at our peril, just as the mayor pointed out, because of the fact we have an obligation to act in good faith and to negotiate in good faith, so either way, we're looking at potential liability for the city, um, but, but I think that the motion, the amended motion made by Commissioner Ward was probably a better motion than the initial one, so that's all I have.
All right, any other discussion? All right, here and none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Here are no opposition, motion carries unanimously. All right. I think you were in the middle of your comments, Commissioner Ward, do you have any more comments?
No, sir.
All right, Commissioner, uh, Lambert.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward, and, and thank you to our fellow commissioners, I think that, you know, first of all, your comments about, this is not an easy job, and I, you know, had a, a meeting with some residents earlier and had a fellow, uh, similar sentiment to you, that, you know, I, I, um, do everything that I can to make sure we're making the very best decision for our city, do, sometimes we have some learning opportunities, sure, and, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that you all saw, that your voices were heard, and that, I hope that you continue to come out and to speak up, and to continue, not only to blast us on social media, which I'm not sure if I want that to continue, but to continue with constructive feedback, to continue, and I want to thank the individuals who actually asked to meet one-on-one, to say, I want to give you a twenty-page document that outlines the history of the waterfront, I want to sit down with you and have lunch, and, and, you know, Commissioner, I know you, and I know where your heart is, let's talk about this, can you hear from me directly, and so I just, and, and for those of you who came and spoke from your heart, um, here today, so I just want to say thank you for that, and so I, I'm gonna still continue with some of the comments that I was gonna say as well, is that some of the things that I was reminded of- asked to meet one-on-one, to say, I want to give you a 20-page document that outlines the history of the waterfront. I want to sit down with you and have lunch, and, and, you know, Commissioner, I know you, and I know where your heart is, let's talk about this, can you hear from me directly? And so I just, and, and for those of you who came and spoke from your heart here today, so I just want to say thank you for that. And so I'm, I'm going to still continue with some of the comments that I was going to say as well, is that some of the things that I was reminded of in those meetings, one of them was uncorking the bottle, which was referenced, and for those of you who don't know that, that means removing the library that was at the end of Clematis. And what it says here, the definition of it, was to reestablish the historic link between the waterfront and Clematis Street to activate the downtown. And from all of the emails that I've read, and all of the conversations that I've had, this is what I took away, was we want more opportunities for families to enjoy the waterfront. We want more boosted tourism, to enhance our economic powerhouse, to enhance beautiful views, to have exercising opportunities, to continue the charity events that happen along this area. And I think, and I'm hopeful that we will still continue with these robust community input meetings that the mayor talked about, because what I was going to request in these meetings is that we look at the waterfront as a whole, and that we look at it as a master plan, and only after that should we consider if a marina fits into that plan, and if it doesn't, that we don't move forward on that. I like what some of you were saying here. I wrote down, not how and when, but if. And also, in this great document that I hope that Rick Rose and Joan Goldberg makes public if, if need be, but it talks about a day-long charrette that was held with over 400 active citizen participants, and it has, you know, I think like six different stopping points, and that's amazing, and it just shows how valuable our waterfront is. So I just, I want you to know that your voices are heard, and that's all I have to say about the waterfront, but I thought it would, I have a few other announcements. Ironically, I have an announcement that, about public input meetings, about a park, about Drayer Park. So I would encourage you, for all of you who are engaged in this park, to be concerned about Drayer Park and, and be involved in that too, because we have an amazing opportunity to partner with the Boys and Girls Club, to bring services to our community, to enhance the Cox Science Center, and the, the zoo, the Palm Beach County Zoo that we have in that area. So I encourage you to attend one of these meetings on Thursday, July 27th, at 6:00 PM, at the Cox Science Center STEM Education Center, on July 29th, Saturday, at 10:00 AM at Don Ramone's, or on Saturday, August 5th, at 10:00 AM, also at the Cox Science Center. Beyond that, I also wanted to ask city administration, I'd be happy to provide this information to you, but in some of our neighborhoods, we suffer from bad actors in the vacation rental industries. There are very good providers who provide a service to our community, but too often, we hear about those who are breaking laws, and Boynton Beach recently passed some policy, six points that I'd love to share with administration to see if we're covering all of these policies as well. Maybe there is an opportunity to implement some more regulation to help make sure we maintain the, the look and the feel of our neighborhoods. And then finally, I wanted to read some remarks from one of our neighborhood associations. Sunshine Park Neighborhood Association, for those of you who don't know, is just a little bit to your south here. They, this is from their president, Dennis Perry. He said, "On behalf of Sunshine Park Neighborhood Association, I would like to commend the Public Works Department for a job well done. Sunshine Park recently became a historic district, and in recognition of that, our neighborhood association set out to purchase 10 historic signs to be posted throughout our neighborhood. After contacting Robert Cato, the Public Works Operation Coordinator, he along with his crew, Alex Revere and Tony Saldivar, both Public Works traffic technicians, did a walkthrough with myself and members of our board to ascertain the best size, position, and location for the signs. As soon as we received the signs, I contacted Robert, and the next day, he and his crew installed the signs. We received nothing but compliments from our neighbors and the general public on the installed signs. Thank you again for exceptional service to our community." I wanted to thank that staff and everybody who worked on this, and for the neighborhood for partnering with the city on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Beduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor, and I agree with Commissioner Lambert with regard to, we've got to take a look at vacation rentals and the proliferation of them, and, and see what we can do if, if there's any additional regulations that are needed. I also wanted to address a comment made by Commissioner Ward that I agreed with regarding some of the correspondence that we received from members of the public, you know, threatening to make sure that we're never re-elected again. One of them particularly stands out in my mind, where the resident said, "We will make sure that you live out your days in shame." Live out my days in shame? So I like Commissioner Ward, maybe it's the lawyer in us, but when people say things like that to me, and we will make sure you never get elected, I look at that as a challenge. Challenge accepted. Let's, let's go. See if you can, you know, boot me out of office. And if you do, more power to you, and maybe there's someone out there better to represent the people than me. And I'm not here, just like Commissioner Ward said, if there's someone better, maybe, maybe you can find them and convince them to run. That doesn't motivate me. You know, my public service stands on, on its own, whether I'm here, sitting up here on this dais, or whether I'm a volunteer firefighter, or whether I'm doing something else out in the community. I've devoted my life to public service. And as an attorney, though, the attorney comes out in me when people make threats like that, and it's more of a challenge to me. So just keep that in mind for future things that might come in front of us, that I, it just doesn't work well with me. Just use, use good common sense, talk to me like a human being, and, and tell me why something isn't good for our city, and most likely, I'll agree with you. I mean, if it's commonsensical, and if it's, sounds like it's good for our city or not good for our city, I may very well agree with you. With that being said, I did want to recognize the passing of Jack Hairston, affectionately known as Jack the Bike Man. Jack was just such a wonderful human being, such a wonderful addition to our city. He just passed away recently at his home downtown. You know, Jack ran Jack the Bike Man, that was a children's charity that put smiles on, on thousands of faces of children in our community and beyond. I worked with Jack at Rotary of West Palm Beach, doing a lot of these bike giveaway events, and, and literally only a month ago, I was talking to Jack about how maybe the city could help in, in his pursuit of, of touching the lives of every child in our community. And unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to further those discussions with him and see what we could do to maybe, you know, work with him and, and help him with his building and, and all that. But for everyone who knows, their, their charity continues. Jack the Bike Man is, has a building, and they need help with raising funds to, to keep his dream alive. And so anyone out there who has the ability, you know, I've purchased bikes for my kids from Jack, I've donated bikes that, from, you know, to Jack, and just such a wonderful guy and such a wonderful charity, and he will be missed. The only, the last thing I wanted to talk about was not necessarily the marina, but a, a topic that came up during the marina discussions, that kind of took me back, it took, took me aback. It was mentioned that maybe we don't want to have a marina because of the environmental impact. And there was some residents who told me that there's boats out there that dump sewage, raw sewage, and solid waste in our intercoastal on a regular basis. This kind of shocked me. I, I hope that I'm not naive. I've been a boater my entire life. My father and I have always had boats with bathrooms on them. We never, and I have never dumped a holding tank in the intercoastal waterway, the ocean, or any body of water. For one thing, it's a crime. It's a state crime, might even have federal implications, but we need to look at it, if this is as rampant as everyone's saying it is, then maybe we need some sort of facility that has pump-out, you know, pump-out stations. Maybe we do need a marina with, with six pump-out stations for people to pull in and, and pump their tanks out if they're just dumping them indiscriminately in our, our waterway. I know that's probably not something that many of you want to hear, or docks that are devoted to pump-out, but I think it's incredible if it's as widespread as some of you are having me believe, and there are residents downtown who have told me they know it's true, because they did it themselves. And I thought that was shocking, and quite frankly, disgusting. And I just, that's all, that's the only way I can put it, is that I can't believe that people who say that they're for the environment, say that they're worried about the impact of these marinas on our environment, are going out in their own boats and dumping waste. It's unbelievable to me. So if we could just look as a city and see if we have any ordinances on the books with regard to the, you know, dumping of solid waste and, 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 you know, these things into our waterway, sewage, raw sewage into our waterway, I think that is probably a good idea to be looked at. And if there are no facilities, which I believe our code says you have to have pump-out stations if you have a certain number of docks that are marina, but if we don't have these available, and if there are not the mobile pump-outs available, then we need to look as a city of what can we do to make sure that these facilities exist, so that boats are not dumping into our waterways?
Thank you. Let, let me just say that as I started off this meeting, or before we got into the meeting, I am still committed to doing a full-blown waterfront, waterfront visioning process. So we'll, we'll continue that. As I said earlier, we will get the first meeting going in the next couple of weeks, and hopefully you all will express, doing those sessions, what your desires are, what you would like to see and not see in our waterfront. The main concern that I have is making sure we activate our waterfront. We, we have data, I've seen data, that shows that the biggest users of our waterfront, frankly, are the homeless. And so it is unfortunate, and so we need to come up with a master plan that activates that waterfront and discourages the, the use of the waterfront by those who are not housed, and so that they don't see that as their personal living room. So we will continue along the lines that I described earlier. Hope to see you all at many of those visioning sessions, to share your thoughts and your ideas, and how we can protect this, this jewel. I, I agree that the waterfront is a tremendous asset, it is a jewel, and is an asset of the entire city. So we will be reaching out to all four corners of our city, seeking input, opinions from all citizens throughout our city as to how we can protect this jewel. Just a few things, thank you for those who pointed out that the green market was once again voted number one for the third year in a row. Would also like to highlight that on Wednesday, at 10:00 AM at Pleasant City, we will be in partnership with FAMU, Florida A&amp;M University, and HUD, Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city will host the opening of the Pleasant City Community Garden, and, and there will be a workshop on how to build a raised garden bed. As a result of our work with the FAMU Cooperative Extension, this is one of three gardens that will provide essential programs and fresh produce in an area considered a food desert. So all are encouraged to attend. And we did have a beautiful evening of jazz last Wednesday evening, that's already been referred to. And don't forget, the WPN key is available 24/7 online. Visit wpv.com and, and look for the WPN key icon, so you could download the app. I'm going to end, I, I think, on, on a personal note, but it's probably not as, as upbeat as I would like it, and it relates to, and I guess I'll just say that I was shocked and dismayed by the decision taken by the Florida Board of Education last week with respect to how African-American history is going to be taught in our schools in this state. It is an embarrassment, what they have put out, including a reference to the benefits of slavery. There are, when you think of, if you really dig deep, and you don't dig that deep, into the, to the history of slavery in this country, people were stolen from foreign shores, mothers and fathers were separated from their children, they were whipped, they were beaten, there is nothing, nothing positive about the slavery experience in the history of this country. So for a state agency to suggest that, oh yeah, the slaves had some benefits, they learned some trades, well, hell, if they learned the trades, they couldn't send them anywhere, because they were owned, they were property. Even if you learn how to be a blacksmith, you couldn't pick up your tools and go down the street and hang up a shingle and, and set up a blacksmith shop. And, and so I, I, I'm just embarrassed, quite frankly, by this state to, this is 2023, and we're at this point, where we have an official state agency that is, that is basically whitewashing our history in this country? You know, the, the young folks say, what is that term, gaslighting? I'm, I'm an old person. My grandfather used to say, "Don't piss on me and tell me it's rainwater. Excuse my French." But that's what's happening with these set of rules, and how African-American history is going to be taught. And listen, I looked on the website, I saw the members of the Florida Department of Education, the board members. Let me just say, none of them look like me, all right? And so for them to come up with this report, to, to, in part saying that there are some positive things to slavery. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you. God bless you. God bless the great city of West Palm Beach.